Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Valerie Thompson, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Morning and welcome. Boy, I tell you what, nothing like having teachers in the room. I heard a shush and every one of y'all got quiet. We need to put a couple on staff, I think. We do welcome you this morning to council's November 12th meeting. Hope everybody dressed warm because it'll probably be a few degrees colder on the way home than it was here. We're gonna start this meeting as we do all of our meetings, and that is by invoking God's presence. And I'd like to invite Pastor Jimmy Elder from First Baptist Church to the podium and ask him to do just that. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Would you bow with me as we pray? Lord, we are so grateful for the community in which we live. It's a place that provides so much for us, a place where we may fellowship with each other, a place where we may do good and provide space for others to reach the zenith of their lives. Thank you for these who hold this community in trust. We pray you'll bless their wisdom, that you'll guide them, that you'll strengthen them, and lead them in the things that are best. Thank you for the time we share, and we're always grateful to you for blessings, and pray for those who have needs. In your precious name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Pastor Elder, thank you, sir, and thank your congregation for sharing you with us. And we thank you too for what you and your church do every day throughout this community. It's unheralded, but you quietly go about the business of doing God's work, and we're very grateful. Thank you, sir. Next, some of the most polite and quiet and best-looking pledges we've had. I'm gonna invite the 3rd graders from St. Luke. If y'all will come up front, they're gonna lead us in the pledge. And the rest of you, if you please, join me in standing and saluting the flag.
Y'all can spread out through this way, all the way up in the well if you want to. There you go. You can bring some around here.
And by the way, if any parents or school want pictures, you're welcome to stand up here so that you can get a shot of them. I know better than to get in front of a parent with a camera. Because I've been one. It's been a while. Okay, y'all ready?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Outstanding. Don't leave. If you would, whoever has the mic, let's start and pass it around. Give us your name and your age.
Colin Dockery, 8 years old.
Ruby Williams, 8 years old.
John Randall, 9 years old.
Maddie S. T., 9 years old.
Bradley McCarley, 8 years old.
My name is Mason Taylor, and I am 9 years old.
Carter Philaton, 9 years old.
Alex Bjork, and I'm 8 years old.
Lily Anne Bellisle, and I'm 8 years old.
Christian Terry, I'm 8, I'm 9 years old.
Abigail Cleef, I'm 8 years old.
Raina Manick, 8 years old.
Annoye Smontpath, 8 years old.
Holmes Amalvi, 8 years old.
Louise Gudger, 8 years old.
Evie Fuller, 8 years old.
Caroline Keller, 8 years old.
Patrick Pew, 8 years old.
Nee Cal, 8 years old.
CJ Adams, 8 years old.
Ellie Ladson, 8 years old.
Ada Dean, 8 years old.
Jacob Judge, 8 years old.
Luke Addison, 8 years old.
I'm Max Champion, and I am 8 years old.
Kamasi Harmon, 10 years old.
Thomas Oliver, 8 years old.
Kayden O'Neal, 8 years old.
Carly Jane, 8 years old.
Faith Hepburn, 8 years old.
Did we get everybody?
Issa Cannon.
Got the second wave.
Issa Cannon, 8 years old.
Nina Paul, 8 years old, I mean 9 years old.
Charlotte Corsia, 8 years old.
Reynolds Yeoman, 8 years old.
Mason Reed, 8 years old.
Terrence Easton, 8, 9 years old.
Henry Adams, 8 years old.
Sunny Lowens, 8 years old.
Dink Trotter, 8 years old.
Xavier Tustin, 9 years old.
Mike Mazars, 8 years old.
Easton Sasser, 8 years old.
Kayden Bobbin, 8 years old.
Is that everybody?
Skylar Alexander, 8 years old.
Hallie Murray, 8 ye- years old.
Brooke Baldwin, 8 years old.
All right, y'all give 'em a hand again. Y'all say there. And if, if we could, we get the, can we get the teachers' names? You don't have to tell us your age, that wouldn't be a limit.
Ms. Patel.
Ms. Slay.
Angela Blankenship.
I'm just a sub. Lane Klinger.
And also, if the parents are here, would you stand up and let us thank you for raising these great kids? Thank you, guys. Hope you'll come back another time and say the pledge again. Mr. Hughley, good luck.
Mr. Mayor, before they get away, there's a, the young... Mr. Mayor, the young lady with the red bow on her head, I just, she belongs to our Finance Director, Angelica Alexander, and I wanted to point her out to, but it looks like it's too late. Yes, that one. This is Angelica Alexander's daughter.
What a good bunch of young folks. I've had a chance to, to speak to the St. Luke, I think the 4th graders. They are a sharp, sharp bunch of young people. All right, we've got a little bit of an interesting situation. We can't really have any votes today, not yet, because we're still short a quorum. We need one more counselor to show up, and hopefully they're working the phones to make sure they get here. In the meantime, though, we, we do have a presentation from the, from Director Jessica Reynolds from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Welcome. We'll call you to the podium. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor and Council, my name is Jessica Reynolds, and I'm the Director of the Office of Downtown Development at the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. And with me today, I have Tess Harper, who is our Communications and Training Coordinator. And if it's okay, we're both gonna abstain too from telling you our age.
That's fine.
But thank you for having us here today. As the Office of Downtown Development, we manage the Georgia Main Street program and have the pleasure of working with 118 communities across the state of Georgia dedicated to the growth of their historic commercial district through economic development in the context of historic preservation. As you may be aware, the Main Street approach provides a balanced path towards revitalization with a focus, oh, I already said that, and I cannot be development in the context of historic preservation. In partnership with the National Main Street Center, our participating cities are required to meet 10 standards during an annual assessment process in order to become a Main Street America City every single year. During this assessment process, we work as a team to identify communities that have gone above and beyond and who consistently excel in each of these 10 standards. To us, these cities are known as our Georgia's exceptional Main Streets, or what we lovingly refer to them as Gems. It is because of Uptown Columbus's commitment to excellence and stable leadership that I am here this morning to congratulate the City of Columbus on being designated as a 2020 Gems Community. Over the past three years, Downtown Columbus has seen $67 million of private-public investment happening in their downtown. We have seen 20 new businesses opening, creating 127 net new jobs. Additionally, your Main Street program has attracted almost 1 million people to downtown through civic events. You are all to be commended for your dedication to rebuilding the heart of your community. To recognize the City of Columbus, and as a token of our appreciation, I would like to present you with this gateway sign recognizing your designation. It reads, "Welcome to Downtown Columbus, a Georgia exceptional Main Street city." Thank you, and thank you, Uptown Columbus, for all that you do. We can't wait to see what the future holds for your community.
Thank you very much. Ross, would you wanna say anything?
Well, this is, this is really, this is Becca. Becca is, Becca Zajak is our Main Street Manager, and I'd like her to come up and talk about this, because she feels like she's on the spot now. But this is, it's a lot of work for our organization to make sure we shed a light on this. And the Main Street organization has been excellent, but Becca is our Main Street Manager and has really walked this process for the last four years that she's worked for Uptown Columbus, and so we're glad to, glad to have her. And now we're going to be keeping her in this community. This is our announcement that Becca will be running the Dragonfly Trail here in the next month, so we're gonna be, we're gonna be missing her, but I think it says a lot about our community that someone that came here from Michigan, came to Columbus for a job, is taking a second job in Columbus, and I think it says a lot about Uptown, says a lot about our community that we're attracting and retaining the talent like Becca Zajak.
Thank you. So just quickly, if you guys don't know, Main Streets are all over the nation, and specifically in Georgia, we have one of the best programs, not just Uptown, but Jessica and Tess and the rest of their team. It basically, there's four tenants that define great downtowns, and Uptown has historically continued to reach those tenants year after year, year after year. We've been nominated two times for the top 10 American Main Street of the award, and we hope that with some new faces in the Uptown crew, we're gonna get that this year. So they help us track data, they help us measure against other downtowns and see what they're doing, and then it's just a great resource to learn, you know, what are other downtowns doing in Georgia, what are other downtowns doing in the nation that's working, and then taking those lessons and applying them to Uptown. So we have reached, what's the one before Gems called?
Just the classic.
Yeah, Classic Main Street. That was two years ago, we were that designation, and we've gone up to Gems in 2018, 2019, and now 2020. So it's something we're really proud of, we couldn't do it without your help as well. So thank you, thank you to Jess and her team as well as you guys.
We'd like to do a photo, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
With the council?
Sure. We get council standing back in the middle, and y'all can stand right here in front? Jessica and Tess, thank you guys again for all your work for the state of Georgia, and also for recognizing the efforts of Ross and for Becca. And Becca, we're really tickled that, a little disappointed you're leaving Uptown, but we're really glad you're not going far. So congratulations on all the outstanding work. And I do have to say, you ain't seen nothing yet. There's some good things coming. Good things coming. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, well, we, we can now entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, motion, have a motion second to approve, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Yes, Counselor Woodson.
Caucus Counsel Sandra, could you put a vote for me for last week on the Theater Arts Grant, I think it was, for the movie?
I'll defer to see your term, say, is that permissible? We can do a motion to reconsider real quickly, it's no problem.
I thought we've done it in the past.
Why don't we do the motion to reconsider when we have a full council? Is that okay?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Yeah. I remember doing things like that in the past, where you came back and said...
Yeah.
We do a lot at the same meeting.
All right.
Yeah, that's okay.
And we do have a resolution honoring Mayor Pro Tem. Do you have that?
We do. If, you wanna have a counselor read it into the record or just...
You've got one sitting right next to you.
This resolution is in honor of the meritorious service rendered Columbus by Ms. Evelyn Turner-Pew. A resolution expressing appreciation of the Columbus Council for meritorious service rendered Columbus by Ms. Evelyn Turner-Pew. Whereas Evelyn Turner-Pew was elected to the Columbus Council in 1988 to serve the citizens of District 4, and has admirably served their interests through her recent retirement on October 31st, 2019. Whereas she was elected by her fellow counselors as Mayor Pro Tem in 2007, and held this position with distinction until 2019. Whereas Mayor Pro Tem Pew received her Bachelor's Degree in Management and Accounting in 1976, and her Master's of Business Administration in 1985 from Columbus College, now Columbus State University. Whereas she worked as internal auditor, lead financial analyst, and as manager of Columbus' financial operations for Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia from 1991 to 1999. Whereas she then worked as a Vice President and Licensed Insurance Agent for SunTrust Bank, West Georgia, and would also serve as Branch Manager of the Columbus SunTrust Main Office. Whereas Mayor Pro Tem Pew served as Budget Director, Chairperson for the Consolidated Government for the years 2002 through 2006, was appointed by Lieutenant Governor Mark Taylor to the Georgia Public Defense Council in 2003, received the One Columbus 2002 Service Award, was appointed by Governor Zell Miller to the Georgia Policy Council on Children and Families, to the University of Georgia Carl Benson Institute of Government Advisory Committee, and to the MHMRS-A Regional Board from 1994 to 2001. Whereas she has held numerous positions for the National League of Cities, including the NLC Public Safety and Crime Prevention Steering Committee, the NLC Juvenile Justice Reauthorization Act of 2000, 1000, I'm sorry, 1996, the NLC Crime Prevention Advisory Council from 1997 to 1998, and the NLC Advisory Board. Whereas she was elected Georgia Municipal Association President for 1999 to 2000, served as GMA First Vice President in 1998, and served numerous years on the GMA Executive Board, and was elected Chair of the Women in Municipal Government Section of GMA in 1995. Whereas Evelyn Turner-Pew has also served her community through work on the American Cancer Society Board of Directors, Liberty Theater Board of Directors, Springer Theater Board of Directors, Rivers Center Board of Directors, the Muskogee County Excellence in Education Foundation, the Girls Inc. Board of Directors, the St. Francis Hospital Board of Directors, and has served her beloved Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority since 1972, including a term as President from 2000 to 2004. And whereas the countless accomplishments of Mayor Pro Tem Evelyn Turner-Pew are worthy of special recognition by this council. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we hereby commend and congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Evelyn Turner-Pew upon her retirement on October 31st, 2019, and express our deep appreciation to her for her dedicated years of service to this council, the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, our state, and our nation. We wish her continued happiness and success in her retirement. Let a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Mayor Pro Tem Turner-Pew. I move adoption of the resolution.
Motion second to adopt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it is adopted. And before I turn it over to the City Attorney, I just wanna make note that as if there, as if one wasn't enough, there are now two Walker Garrets. Counselor, Counselor Garrett and his wife Kelsey now have a new son, Walker Garrett Jr. So we wish them many years of being educated by their child, and we're really excited for them. This is their first child, and we are very, very thrilled that everything went well, and baby and mother are doing fine. All right, Mr. City Attorney, you wanna hit your button, and I'll see if I can keep from messing it up.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a couple items to vote on. First, the ordinance amending Chapter 3, which would create the new category of food hall licensee.
Motion second to approve, any discussion? Ru Sean Kuitt, counselors, please register your votes. It's approved.
All right. Next one up is the amendments to Chapter 14 regarding registration requirements and false alarm penalties for police fire medical alarms. It's not effective until next year, but it's ready for action.
Motion and second to approve, any discussion? Counselor Allen.
Just, Deputy Chief, would you make sure that all the alarm companies are familiar with this and understand? I had a couple of questions this weekend that apparently they were not real clear on it, but if y'all would, over the next couple of months, reach out to everybody, just to go over it again and make sure there's a good understanding of what we're doing. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Davis.
That's a good, that's a good point. Just for the sake of the citizens, I know there's still a little confusion out there. Could the chief maybe just kinda walk us through that again one more time?
I think that's fine.
Just the process of it?
Yeah, just Cliff Notes version, just...
Just for the sake of the viewing public.
Yeah, it's fine. We wanna make, we wanna make sure they understand.
What we're doing is, we're not recreating the ordinance, we're just modifying what we have. Presently, you have to register your alarm, but you register it one time. What we're asking is that you register your alarm, and then you register it every year. Now, if you're presently registered with the City of Columbus, it's not a charge. You can register online whenever we get a vendor. Your re-registering every year is no charge. Again, you can do all that online. What we've done is, for the false alarms, because, you know, we answered over 22,000 false alarms last year. We, it's over 60 a day, and the Fire Department answered over 2,500 false alarms last year, and they're averaging that about every three years. So what we've done is, we've, we've upped the penalties, that on the first one, it's free, the second one, you can go to alarm school or pay a $50 fine, and the third one, you're assessed $100. Under the current ordinance, you start getting assessed a fine at the fourth false alarm, and we're just moving it to the third one. There was some confusion with, with people about, well, if my alarm company gets an alarm, is that a false alarm? The only time we count it is when we're notified. If a police car or a fire engine is dispatched to the scene and arrives at the scene and does not find what they were dispatched for, then that counts as a false alarm. The, the reason we're trying to do this is, is to try to cut down on the number of false alarms we have every year. We want owner, and talking to some of the people that have alarm companies in Columbus, we have a lot of people who, who know their battery's low, and they don't care to replace it. They know they've got us short somewhere, and they don't care to fix it. So what we're trying to do is get those people to fix your alarms, get your alarms to work right, and the business owners, when you bring in a new employee, you know, you're telling them when to come to work, you're telling them where to clock in, when to go on break, well, now we want you to add, tell them how to work your alarm as part of it. So we'll cut down on those false alarms, and that's what we're trying to do.
And two other things, would you address the, I know that there's a lot of, there's a lot of residents that are registered, but they were registered a long time ago, and the houses have sold, they transition, there's other people living in them, so the people there may not even be on record. So if you guys try to get in touch with somebody, you don't even know who's, you don't even know who you're calling, it may not be the person that lives in that house. And then the second is the appeal process.
Right. First of all, you're right. We have a house, and talking to the people with the Finance Division, if someone built a house 20 years ago and registered their alarm, and then the house has been sold three or four times, the city has no idea who owns the alarm. And, you know, it doesn't seem like a big deal, but if you live next door to a business, that's alarm keeps going off two or three times at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning, and the police don't know who to contact to come turn it off, it is a big deal. The appeals process is that if you don't feel like your alarm was false, and you feel like you're being, you feel like you're being charged unfairly, then you have 30 days to appeal, and the appeal process will be to the person who the Chief of Police designates as the hearing officer, and that will probably end up being me. And then if you don't like what the hearing officer says, then your final appeal will be with the Chief of Police. The outside vendor was not gonna be involved in this appeal process, it will be with us. And, you know, we're gonna take a common sense approach to appeals of alarms. If your alarm went off because you forgot to put your dog up, well, that's a false alarm. If you're having an issue, and again, I talked to some of the people that own law, own car companies in Columbus, and they said that sometimes when you go out to a house, it's a trial and error thing. You may clean the sensor, and then it goes off again, so you may have to replace that sensor, and then it goes off again. It's kinda go, like going to the mechanic with your car, and if it's not doing what it was doing when you were riding down the road, he doesn't know what's wrong with it. So it's a trial and error thing. So if people are actively working to have their alarm fixed, we're certainly gonna take that into consideration, because that's, you know, you can't fault people when they're actually trying to get it fixed. But for those people who, you know, they wanna keep setting their alarm, well, they can just pay the fine, and it's probably gonna end up being cheaper for them to get their alarm fixed, and that's what we really want.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Counselor Thomas.
Two questions that have come to me. One was, so if I forget I've set my alarm, and I open the back door, and the alarm goes off...
off, and the alarm company calls me, and I say to them, no, no, don't send the police, that does not count as a false alarm, correct?
That's correct. It does not count.
Okay. I don't know if I do that, but, you know.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know about, and a lot of people do that. A lot of people will say, well, I came home, and I forgot to, you know, and they call me, and I say, don't call the police, or don't send the police. That doesn't count. The majority of your homeowners in Columbus, you know, I've had my alarm since 2008, and the police have come to my house twice. And I think most of the people who have alarms in Columbus can say the same thing. If I have an issue with an alarm, like I hope everyone else in Columbus would do, is call the alarm company out there, and let's get it fixed, because I want it working properly to protect, to do what it's supposed to do.
The other question that I was asked, a gentleman said, he is 70-ish, disabled, he fell in his shower, and his wife couldn't get him out of the shower, so she called 911, and they sent the fire department out there. They got him up, and he did not have to go to the hospital or anything. And he said, because they didn't take me to the hospital, is that a false alarm?
No.
And they said, no. That, that doesn't count either. It's, he had a legitimate medical issue. And so I think that as people understand some of those nuances, they will feel better about this. And most of this, as I understand it, Chief, is coming from businesses, not from.
Right.
Homeowners.
My 911 center can tell you tonight what business alarms are going to go off, and how many times they'll go off during the night. And, you know, it's time to get them fixed. It's time to get your alarms fixed, it's time to start training your employees, it's time to be more responsible, so we can send the police cars and the fire engines on real emergencies.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. The, the questions that I've been getting most are about the application fees and the application process. So could you go into that a little bit?
Well, if you currently have an alarm that's registered with the city of Columbus, which most people do, if you've had your alarm put in by an alarm company, it's registered. They filled out the paperwork for you and sent it in for you. You can check with city finance, they've got the list of who is and who isn't. You, you're grandfathered in, it's not going to be a fee. January the 1st, I think, is the start off date, and we want everybody to register, re-register their alarm on January the 1st, like Counselor Davis said, so we'll know who owns the alarm. Doesn't cost anything, it's free. There's no fee to it. If we go to your house, and you don't have your alarm registered, we're going to tell you how to register your alarm. If we keep coming to your house, and you don't register your alarm, there's going to be a penalty for not registering your alarm. But if you can do it online, you can do it in the mail, we're going to really, as soon as, if it passes, and when we get a vendor, we're going to do a information to the citizens of Columbus through the news media, through Facebook, through social media, to educate people on how to do this.
I was under the impression that after January 1st, there would be a $35 application fee.
If you do not, for all new alarms, yes, ma'am. But if you presently have an alarm registered with the city of Columbus, you're grandfathered in.
So would it be, would it be a correct statement to say that citizens now just should, should contact finance and check to make sure that their alarm is, has been registered and has the correct information, and if it does not, then to fill that out prior to January 1st?
Well, I, I think they can do that, yes, but I think if you've got a burglar alarm at your house that was put in by an alarm company, your alarm is registered. You should have a sticker on a window, or on your garage door, or somewhere, you should have a sticker that has a number on it, and that is your registration number. And I think when we get this thing rolling, that's the number you're going to have to have to, to identify yourself and to be grandfathered in.
Well, we have a Simply Safe system, which my husband installed, so he did not make application. But I did today, so.
Well, you'll be grandfathered in then.
So we're good to go. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, because I, because that is one of the big concerns that I've been getting, is the cost of the application, and really, it's just kind of a, from what I understand, it's a pass-through cost. It's, that's what it's going to cost to process these applications going forward. And so to avoid that, there is a period of time before January 1st that you can check to make sure your alarms are registered, and you can avoid that cost.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Woodson.
Just want to, good morning, Chief. Just want to make sure, just like my colleague said, there's another type of alarm called Ring that a lot of people have. That one also has to be registered, even though it's not a company company.
If you have a burglar alarm that notifies the police or fire to come to your home, it has to be registered.
Ring doesn't. Ring notifies, you know, the owner, it's on your app.
Right.
And it notifies you, you know, you, you can see who's at your door. Matter of fact, you can speak from your, you know, from your phone, that the person would think you are home. That's what Ring does. It's not connected to the police department.
It's not really an alarm, it's a, it's a notification to the owner, and then you get to see, you get to decide. If somebody's breaking into your house, you're going to call the police, and you're not going to say, I have an alarm going off. You're going to say, somebody's breaking into my house.
So that type.
So that would be considered different.
Okay.
This is for alarms that notify the police department or the fire department to respond to your home.
And that's what I want to make clear, because the smart, the smart one is the same way.
Yeah, a lot of people have, have cameras in their home, that when there's motion, it notifies their telephone. Well, that's not a burglar alarm or a fire alarm, that's a camera that notifies your phone that there's somebody at your house.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Sorry.
We had a motion and a second. And is there any further discussion or any further questions? All right, Bruce, would you please cue it? Counselors, you can register your votes, please.
It passes.
The item three, the first zoning hearing. Mayor, we've had a request to delay by Mr. Waddell's attorney until December 10th. Are there any objections to that?
Counselor Davis.
No, I was just going to say, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. City Attorney. I really appreciate all my colleagues calling me and sharing concerns, and Mr. Waddell is, is agreed to work on some matters, to try to find something to address a lot of the concerns that were expressed. So I appreciate that, and it's good to work with folks like that.
Well, I know Counselor Davis has been working really, really hard to try to find a balance between the citizens and between the developers, so another few weeks probably will do some good.
Okay. We'll bring that back December 10th. Next item up for a public hearing is zoning at 5004, 5012, 5028 Warm Springs Road. Proposed for residential office and townhomes. Recommended for approval, and it's Windsong Bond Acre LLC petitioner. Mr. Erickson is here. Are there any questions around the table, or anybody in the audience? Must be heard. All right, don't see any hands. We will bring that back first meeting in December. Next item is a zoning hearing at 8063 Veterans Parkway. It's proposed for PMUD mixed-use development, recommended for approval, White Oak Grove LLC. Are they present? All right, they're here. Any questions around the table or in the audience? Don't see any hands. We will bring that back at the first meeting in December, which I believe is the 5:30 meeting. Is that right, Ms. Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you all. Next, Mayor, we've got a, an amendment to the traffic code. This is speed detection devices we do every so often to allow the use of those devices on the roadways listed. Any questions about that? Ms. Newman is here.
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right. We will bring that back in December. Thank you, Ms. Newman. We do have some add-on items, Mayor. First, I'd like to turn it over to the city manager for an add-on having to do with acquisition of property, and then if that passes, we will immediately bring up another add-on about financing, bond resolution on that. Mr. City Manager.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Ms. City Attorney. I do have an add-on for property acquisition at 5601 Veterans Parkway. And first of all, let me just say that we're asking to your approval to acquire this piece of property, and it's not unusual, as you know, that we acquire property from time to time. We, we acquire property for economic development opportunities, we acquire property for redevelopment opportunities for city services and programs when, when we have a need, or we may acquire property for future needs. And so examples would be, we own quite a bit of property in the Liberty District, we own quite a bit of property in City Village, City Meals, and along Andrews Road, Casita Road, and areas throughout the city, we, we do own property, and, and we do acquire property for various reasons. So we're asking your approval to acquire 5601 Veterans Parkway in the amount of $2.5 million, plus the city's portion of fees and closing costs. The property was being utilized as a satellite campus for Virginia College. The 81,000 square foot building was constructed in 1975, renovated in 2011, and it sits on 7.2 acres. The listed price for that property is $3.2 million, but the seller has accepted our offer of $2.5 million, plus the city's portion of the fees and closing costs. So the acquisition of this property will provide the city with additional office space as needed. The city will be responsible for the annual debt service payment, payments. It's anticipated that the purchase will be financed with a bond issued through the Columbus Building Authority, up to $5 million. That would include any renovation that we might do. And so, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking for council's approval to proceed in acquiring this property.
There's a motion and a second to approve to the motion. Counselor Davis.
Ms. City Manager, I'm going to support your request. I, I believe this is a great short-term and long-term investment for the city, and I think it's going to work out great.
Thank you, sir. All right, motion second. Any further discussion? It's an add-on, so we'll, we'll take a vote by voice. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? It's approved.
All right. Thank you. Now I'll call up the second add-on resolution, the formal bond resolution for maximum principal amount, $5 million. Authorized financing on this purchase, and it is around the table and ready for adoption.
Motion to approve the financing.
We have second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh huh.
Okay, it's approved.
All right, Mayor, I think that's the end of, it's the end of the business items. We would like an executive session for property acquisition and disposal, and a short one on personnel and potential litigation. And again, congratulations to Counselor Garrett.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the public agenda. I'll remind those that appear, we'll start by stating your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes to, to conduct any business with council that you wish. If you can't, if you can't get completed in five minutes, you do have the opportunity to come back at the end of the clerk's agenda for an additional three minutes if there's any further information that you, you want to share. First is Mr. Bill Berry. Is Mr. Berry here? I did not see him. All right, Ms. Audrey Holston-Palmore, regarding a request for meeting with the risk manager. Good morning. State your name and your address, please, ma'am.
Good morning. I feel so fortunate to be present at this moment in time. I am a human being who is identified by the name Audrey Holston-Palmore.
Ms. Palmore, stop for a moment. Your mic's hold up.
The what now? I know, I typically start after they state their name, I just trying to get her to do that. Please continue.
I have that in my writing. I know that.
Please continue, please continue.
I feel so fortunate to be present at this moment in time. I am a human being who is identified by the name Mrs. Audrey Holston-Palmore. I am protected from the elements by the brick, wood, and mortar at the address of 1035 Lawyer's Lane, a dwelling located in Midtown section, which has been referred to as ghetto here at the same public agenda podium by a Columbus, Georgia resident. Don't forget, the world is a ghetto. I am proud and truly blessed that I cared to work with those who cared for me, to instill a concern for where I would and could strive for what has been achieved, my residency. On the fact I applied to appear on the public agenda portion of this meeting has direct ramifications to the choice I made to live in the city of Columbus, Georgia, the birthplace of my existence. On the fourth Saturday of March 2018, my daughter made an effort to manifest a dream to celebrate the existence of a precious chocolate drop human being, my only grandchild. The celebratory spirit of a gathering at the Carver Park was high among family members and friends. We were all looking forward to the cookout event. As the cookout event unfolded, a disturbing factor became evident. We had not, we did not have a civilized location to expel waste at the Carver Park, which is and was managed at the time by the Columbus Consolidated Government Division of Parks and Recreation. Since that time, which is now over a year later, and currently approaching a second year, the manager of this city, Isaiah Hugley, has recommended to our family the thought of the disturbing memory of no place to expel our human waste in a civilized manner, the need to be categorized as something that our memory bank needs to discard. We need to just let it go, of that awful, disdaining, neglectful memory of that day. I am here to let the Columbus, Georgia citizens know that the present city manager, Mr. Isaiah Hugley, solicited the risk manager of the Columbus Consolidated Government Hugley, solicited the risk manager of the Columbus Consolidated Government to confirm with written communication in a letter dated March 7, 2019, the position we are properly... that we were properly treated, and no fault of the government, city government, is warranted. This proclamation that has been presented to me here at a previous council meeting formatted the book of Holston-Palmore, and it is purposely being revealed through my direct verbal approach to have justice of this situation roll down the halls of the consolidated government like the floodwaters of the river that is here in the valley. Through the written communication, through written communication, I have made an effort to have with you, the members of the present sitting council members, with the exception of the newly appointed council member, has no... and I have not received any response from any of you. I am still awestruck by the letter from the risk manager of March 7, 2019, of this consolidated government. I am requesting an additional three minutes to present evidence of written communication established during this journey to justice.
Ms. Palmore, your time's up. You'll be granted those three minutes at the end of the clerk's agenda. Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your attention.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Next is Mr. David Pate. Welcome, Mr. Pate. If you would, start by giving your name and address, please, sir.
My name is David Pate. I live at 4915 St. President Avenue in Columbus, Georgia.
Yes, sir.
And been living in Columbus all my life. I have some pictures about a brief thing I want to talk about, if I may.
You can give them to the clerk, and she'll distribute them around the...
Folks, I came before y'all about a little over two months ago. And the reason I came was because my wife and I have been RVing for, oh, gosh, 10, 15 years, and we enjoy it so much. And we've had an RV in our driveway for like 15 years since I retired from the fire department. And I really didn't know there was an ordinance in Columbus, Georgia that stated that you was not supposed to have an RV over 32 feet long. Our RV was over... it was 36 feet long. It actually measured like 38 feet long, if you measured everything on the RV. Well, I came before y'all and asked when I found out that I couldn't keep my RV at home. And I just love to keep my RV at home so I can work on it, keep it clean, and have it ready to go when we get an opportunity. So anyway, I came and I talked to y'all about it about two months back, and I asked if there was any way that y'all could reconsider on the ordinance and extend the length of the RV that one could keep at home, as long as we keep it in our backyard or in our driveway where it cannot be seen from the front of our home. So that was about a little over two months ago, and the ordinance was not changed, still the same. So I guess for some reason, you know, you decided not to make any changes. Wife and I have been looking everywhere. We've went hundreds of miles and spent, I don't know how many hours, trying to find us an RV that we could keep at home. And what we have found is that, you know, it's just almost impossible to find an RV that we can be comfortable in at all under the 32-feet situation. And what I'm here to ask y'all about is, the picture you got shows the front end of RVs. And what I wanted to ask y'all was, is there any way that y'all could consider changing, I mean, the way that the RVs are measured? If you could just allow another little sentence to be put in the ordinance which states that, hey, an RV will be measured by the living space only? If you can just do that, it would make so much difference. You can't even imagine how much difference it makes. That little two feet... What I'm talking about is the... Right now, the way that the RV is measured, is measured from, you know, from the rear of the RV all the way to include the hitch on the front, as you can see in that picture. That hitch sticks out, you know, a couple of three feet. If you could consider making a change in that ordinance and just say, look, you know, the way we're going to measure an RV will be to include the box or the living space, then it would just help us so much, and I'm sure a lot of other people who may be in the market to buy an RV. I mean, we have looked, I'm talking about probably 100 hours trying to find an RV. And we could have done bought one if that was... I mean, everywhere we go, we take a measuring tape with us. And we could have done found us an RV if we had had that opportunity, because the ones we found, the boxes were 32 feet long. But when we measured the other, you know, it was like, you know, two or three feet longer when we measured the hitching part up front. So if there's any way y'all could consider making that change in that ordinance, I would greatly appreciate it, and it would not only help me, it would help... I assure you, you know, I've been camping a long time and know a lot about campers. And I know that that change would help so many people, not just us. Not just us. So that's what I'm here to ask you to consider. And that's all I wanted to ask y'all to do, because we would love to buy another camper, and we would love to have that little bit of leadway, so that the RV would just be measured to include the box or the living space.
Mr. Pate? Yes, sir. And I was just going to say thank you. Your time's about up, but if any council member has a direct question, we'd like you to be able to answer, so don't go away. First, Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Pate, on the picture that you have here, I want to make sure that I understand what you're asking us to do. The area where it looks like the hitch and the...
Ropeing tank.
Whatever that is. That's what you're saying should not count?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's what I would like to ask you to consider.
Then I would move that we amend our ordinance, that our planning department look into amending the ordinance to hit that.
Okay. There's... To be clear, there's a motion to use just the living space of the vehicle in the calculation of the 32 feet. Is that correct?
And not the hitching part, yes.
Okay. And I think I heard a second. We have a few other counselors. Is this to the motion, Counselor Woodson?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I would ask my colleague to let's give it back to Mr. Hutchinson. I was just talking to him about it, about us looking into the matter, and he... Him and I were having a discussion, and we said, I'll make a request for us to go back and review it, go out there and look at it, because it could make a difference with the hitch and not. So I would ask, let's give it to Code and Inspection to look at it, and let's work on something, and then we can bring it back. And I apologize to you, I thought we took care of it. Apparently, it slipped our hands. But I'm just finished talking to our Code and Inspection, and we're going to go ahead and look at it and considered your request. So I ask that we do that.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, when you say consider the request, ma'am, are you talking about consider the request to just measure the living space? Is that what you're...
Correct. Correct. The living space or what other recommendation they might have? We're going to look... And I, again, I apologize that we dropped it. I didn't realize we did. So we're going to go back and look at what the difference will be, what it is, and then we'll come back with a recommendation to amend it.
Okay. I think, just to be clear, I think that that has occurred. I think that Code and Inspection has looked at this issue. We've looked at it. And I think basically, the recommendation was that there was no way to start accommodating all of the different nuances that would need to be considered with regards to the measurements. And because of that, I think the recommendation was to leave it as it is. Now, you've got a resident who made a very, I think, what sounds like a very reasonable request. I feel certain, though, that when we ask Mr. Hutchinson, there are going to be some exceptions to the rule on what's affixed to that living space and all of those things as well. But I think what I heard Counselor Thomas make a motion for was to require that the 32 feet be contained in a living space only. And it might be good to allow Mr. Hutchinson the time to prepare some examples of what might be accepted from that measurement. That would be something I think that we might want to look at, with just that one recommendation. But there are other counselors. Counselor Davis?
Thanks, ma'am. Mr. Pate, thanks for coming and sharing your request. And I'm open-minded, but I will say this, there's always two sides of the story, because I get the other side of the equation. Those people that are really concerned, your neighbors, others who are concerned. I'm just using that as an example. But so... And rarely, we don't change ordinances at this table without going... Counselor Woodson's right, without doing some kind of a research and report and study and getting some recommendations. We just don't... I don't know when we have done that. But I would not support that without staff reviewing it and bringing us some kind of report back to seeing if there's a possibility. Like I said, I'm open-minded to that, but at the same time, I got to keep in mind that there's two sides of the story, because I've got two people that call me all the time about this very issue. And it's hard for me to address it, other than to just say we've got an ordinance on the books. Now, if it changes, then I'm sure I'm going to be getting some more calls as well. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. The thing that concerns me about this, I get calls too, without repeating a lot of what Counselor Davis says, there are a variety of styles of trailers and campers and pull and driven campers. But some of the living space goes out over the trailer hitch in some cases. So how are you going to measure that living space? You can't just say living space. I think you'd have to define it a little more definitive, but again, I would rely on staff to look into this a little more and come back and report to see if there is a need to change. So I'm open to looking at it, but, you know, there are some designs out there that would make conflict with what your intentions are and would cause problems in neighborhoods. And we do get a lot of calls about the huge camper sitting on the street and blocking roads and blocking traffic and that kind of thing.
May I say?
Parking it behind your home. I would, again, yield to the staff, but if it's out of sight, out of mind kind of situation, that may work. But again, you know, we've got not just your request, we've got to listen to the others that live around you and live around this type of vehicle in the neighborhoods that disrupt, in their mind, they disrupt quality of life, so.
May I respond? And, Ms. Pate, this sounds so ridiculous, but I'm going to ask you, if you will come back, if you have any additional information, you'll get three more minutes, but the only thing you can respond to at this point is any direct question.
I can't respond to what he just said.
Ms. Palmore, may I?
I just wanted to say, folks, look, I'm certainly one that would never want to do something to offend my neighbors. You know, I would not cause... I understand that. But what you just talked about, if you change the ordinance, just like these ladies just voted on, if you change the ordinance to make the measurements to include the living space only, it will never change. I understand what you're saying, sir, but I know a lot about RVs. I'm talking about a lot. You know, a lot. If you change that ordinance to say, if we're going to measure an RV to include the living space, it ain't going to change. Because I don't care if you've got a camper like what y'all got the pictures of, folks. I don't care if you've got a fifth wheel. I don't care if you've got a motorhome. It's going to be the same. You're going to measure it from the front to the back of the living space. It ain't going to change. It ain't never going to change. There ain't no... I understand what you're saying, sir.
The definition of living space...
The living space is not going to change.
Okay.
It will never change.
All right. We've got a few other counselors, Mr. Pate. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, my motion was, I think, to have staff take a look at this and bring us back something. And with the emphasis, if you will, on dealing with the living space, as Mr. Pate has said, it may be that staff has to come back to us with something other than what you have specifically requested. But I think that council, I mean, that staff understands that we are trying... We're trying to accommodate you, and we're trying to accommodate these other folks, and we want you to come back to us as quickly as you can, and let us know what we can do to hopefully satisfy everybody. Some of the main parts of that statement that I just made was that you are going to come back to us and let us know what you have come up with. So that was the intent of the motion.
Very good. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Also, if you could answer this question today, that'd be great. If you have to come back, I understand. What does the ordinance say about the visibility from the street? Like, if it's longer than the 32 feet, but it's hidden, like in a garage or behind the house, is that allowable? Okay. Maybe that's something we could look into. I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. City Manager, did you have anything that you wanted to?
Yes. Ms. Mayor, I think I wanted clarification from Counselor Thomas, and then, of course, Counselor Davis and Mayor Protem Allen hit on it, that we would have an opportunity to bring something back and present it as a first re-ordinance change, and there will be a public hearing, and other people will have an opportunity to weigh in. But also, just wanted, just for a second, the director to just point out, there are other things that we measure, and we would have to be consistent in the way we measure other things as well, if that would be your preference. And he can mention a couple of those, but we would certainly like to bring something back. Well, if someone wants to sponsor a change, and certainly come back, we'll... We can tell you what we think. But I would like for the director to have a chance to speak.
Okay. Mr. Hutchinson?
Section 4224, the UDO says that storage and recreation of vehicles, boats, trailers in all residential zoning districts shall comply with the requirements. The maximum size should not exceed 32 feet in length. So your question about can it be anywhere, if it's over the 32 feet, it can't be on the premises. It's not allowed. So therefore, there can be a modification to that. The concern about the trailer length is now if we're going to look at other commercial trailers. So if we're now excluding the hitches for these, are we going to be excluding hitches for commercial trailers and their length? And are they just going to consider now just the better the truck, not the whole length of the hitch as included? Pull-to-trailer still do have that little piece that goes over the hitch, as Counselor Allen mentioned, that would still negate this even if we changed it, because the hitch, if that's still considered living space, if it's over the hitch, it would still count as against the 32 feet. So when we talked, I've been talking with planning the last two months, we looked at all different ordinances, we searched different cities, they had privacy screening that mentioned that. But now, are we adding another undue burden to the owner, making them have to put a privacy fence now to screen it from view? And then how tall is the trailer hitch? Now, are you making it over eight foot? You can't have a fence over eight feet. Now, you have a trailer that's still going to be sticking over the top, and you can still see it from the right away. So that's why we didn't go down that road, and we, out of the probably 8,000 complaints I get from special enforcement every year, we have six of these that deal with trailer hitch or length of trailers. So like I said, when Rick brought it back last council meeting, we just said, we didn't know if the juice was worth the squeeze. Now, we have a whole ordinance put together, it's probably 14 pages long, about site distances and views and all of that, and we can bring that to y'all if you all would like to entertain that and see what kind of... We really got into the weeds in it, and we went and looked at dimensions, setbacks from side yards, visuals, all that kind of stuff. If we want to have privacy fencing or non-privacy fencing, separation from the back of the house, like, we looked at all of that. So we're fine to come back with that, but we just looked at the amount of complaints that we receive on these. with that. But we just looked at the amount of complaints that we receive on these. Most times, we go out there, we tell them, hey, your trailer's too long, people move it. You know, it's, like I said, obviously, it can't be in the right way. But typically, when we deal with it, it's just, it's not a major, major issue. But like I said, we'll continue to move as far as y'all want us to.
So how many complaints are you getting annually?
This year, we got three.
Three complaints?
Yes, ma'am, on length of trailer. We only got three. So, because we go out there, we roll it, and we determine if it's bigger than that. Most times, we get 10-day warning, they move it, or if there's not, they go and store it. So we just don't get very many complaints on this situation. So we didn't think that would warrant getting a 14-page ordinance added to a section right now where we only have four bullet points. And we meet most of the requirements we need to take care of.
All right. Any further questions of Mr. Hudson? John, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Page? All right, Mr. Page, if you have any additional information you wanted to share, you can come back at the end of the clerk's agenda, okay?
So how long do I have to wait before I can come back?
No, it'll be today. It'll be probably another 45 minutes.
Okay.
To an hour.
I thank y'all for listening to me.
Yes, sir, thank you. And thank you for serving the city as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Thomas?
Mayor, do we need to change this from a motion? Let me withdraw the motion and make it as a referral.
Probably.
Let's do that. I will withdraw the motion and refer this to the city manager and the department.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up on the public agenda is Mr. Jared Jones regarding refund of back property taxes. Mr. Jones here? All right, we'll move on to the city manager's agenda. Can you hit your light, sir?
Mr. Mayor, first on my agenda, I have the solid waste plan. And I'm actually going to have Deputy Director of Public Works, Kyle McGee, to come. He has two or three slides before I ask for your approval to move forward.
Okay.
Director Kyle McGee.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we did have Mr. Joseph Layfield on the public agenda.
Oh, I didn't see him on this first one. I apologize.
I did not know if he was here or not.
I'm sorry. Is Mr. Layfield here? I didn't have him on my original agenda, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Ms. McGee, you can continue.
All right. Good morning. Just wanted to go over solid waste management plan, a little bit of background. We've been here before talking about this. A little bit of history of agencies involved. This deals with the Department of Natural Resources, Environmental Protection Division, a little bit of community affairs, local government solid waste management plans must at a minimum provide for the next 10 years of waste capacity. We also need to identify each solid waste handling facility within our community, and also identify those sites that are not suitable for a solid waste management facility. And currently, we don't have any land, according to our research and our plan, any land suitable for another solid waste landfill. So keep that in mind. A bit on the timeline here, we began the development of this solid waste management plan in July of 18. We had the plan drafted in May of this year. We presented to this council, Abby Goldsmith with Goldsmith Resources, our consultant that helped develop the plan, presented to you all on September the 10th. And we mainly focused on the differences between our previous plan and this new plan. We didn't receive any comments concerning that. Since then, we've advertised and had one public meeting that we had at the recycle center. We advertised for two weeks and held that meeting on October the 3rd. No one in attendance, no comments. So for the sake of time and interest, we would like to open the floor up now for public comments and use this opportunity for our second public meeting. And if there are no substantial concerns, then we would move to adopt the plan today. So following the adoption of the solid waste management plan, we would begin the second phase of our rate study. We would come back to you all and ask, hopefully do some kind of work session or something, get your input on who should be paying for what service, who should be bearing the brunt. And we'll cover that in the rate study. But are there any questions?
Well, let me just say, Mr. Mayor, and counsel, and to those here today, what I'm asking the mayor and council to approve today or to adopt is the solid waste management plan that covers the years 2019 through 2028. A solid waste plan that covers the years 2019 through 2028. This plan has been developed to establish a roadmap to achieve the goals of reducing and managing solid waste within Muskogee County, except within the Fort Benin Military Reservation. And so it's a plan. And we need a plan. And, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, if there's someone who wants to come in, we would welcome them to come in.
Did we meet all the requirements for this to be a public hearing?
You've advertised...
We've advertised for four weeks leading up to this meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
But they say this meeting will...
Yeah, that's what they're saying. They advertised, letting them know that today would be the public hearing.
Yes.
In council chambers.
Yep.
Well, he was, yes, because he was giving...
And we do have public hearings at city council. And of course, if there are others, if you're interested in more meetings, we're happy to have more meetings. And you've had, how many?
And the reason for that, the first presentation to council, there was no comments or concerns. Our first public meeting, no one showed up. So I was expecting the same on this one. And so for the sake of time, I was, but if there's anything of concern, we can go back and do it again. So we've had one official public meeting.
Yeah.
Counselor Davis?
I would just, I would, I'll add a comment to this process. You know, in the past, we've talked about alternative technology and ways to deal with our waste problem, other than what we're doing now, which I guess I put it in conventional recycling. We've talked about that. I mean, I've never, I haven't, I don't know of any follow-up that we had. So my question would be, is that going to be part of this process, recommendations that things that we need to look at, or we need to know what is out there as far as technology? You know what I'm talking about when I say that, right?
Yes.
Waste, energy, things like that. I mean, I would really like to know what's going to be available in 15, 20, 25 years versus doing the same old, same old. That may be the solution. I'm not sure. But my question is, would this plan cover those type of options that the city might have?
Yes, absolutely. That is one of our goals, and our implementation strategies is focused on exploring, constantly exploring, new technologies for waste diversion.
So there is no, if they adopt this plan, it's a plan, and there's no limit to what you can or can't do over the course of time, and you can amend the plan, and you can introduce new technologies. Is that right?
Yes, yes.
But you got to have a plan approved and sent to the state or wherever it goes.
Okay. Mayor Protem, did you have a, okay. All right. City manager is asking that this plan be approved by council. Need a motion and a second if that's the desire of council.
So...
Motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? Bruce, you'll queue it. Counselors, please register your votes.
And while they're voting, I want to reiterate that there's nothing to prohibit us from, yes.
Well, and I think this is an issue that, as Kyle pointed out, they're not making any more land these days.
Yeah.
And there has got to be a more innovative approach. And I feel certain that with the personnel we have on staff in Public Works, that we're aggressively pursuing all of those.
Mayor, if I may, I want to add one more thing. The city manager, on Second Avenue, there's a transfer station. Does this also deal with private businesses and things of that nature? Is this just for the city?
It does. One thing that we don't have a lot of data on is the commercial collection. And we've identified that in this plan. Muskogee County, City of Columbus, Columbus Consolidated Government is responsible for all of our waste, not just the waste that Public Works picks up and services. And through this plan, we've identified that roughly 270,000 tons, we're only picking up 70,000. The commercial side, such as Advance Downtown and some other haulers, we don't have any information on that. So we've addressed that in this plan, that we need some kind of reporting mechanism where these private haulers are letting us know what kind of waste they're hauling out of Muskogee County, where is it going. So if we wanted to do recycling initiatives countywide, we would have that information.
Well, and I said Second Avenue, it's actually on Veterans Parkway. But I'm just going to be, let it, I'm going to let it be known that I do get a lot of concerns about that. Odors, debris, the roads, you can go by there anytime. You can just see the tracks coming out of this place or these places, all up and down the road, you know? And the question of where does it all go at the end of the day, when the rain comes. So I do, there are a lot of concerns about this stuff. I don't know if this plan would...
Well, in our plan, we've identified the need to increase some ordinances, to tighten up on our zoning, what can go where and what should go where. And we've been working and having those discussions.
And this plan's posted online. So any counselor that wants to go pull this up, take a look at it, and kind of get down in the details of it, and I would urge you to do so. But, and the public can also access it.
Yes.
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, and counsel, I'm aware of the complaints and concerns. And I've had meetings and conversations, not recently, with the owners. And they were very candid conversations with them. And in fact, there's a very small sliver of property that we own right there, that they have wanted to continue to lease from us. And not to get into any details, but I think the lease has expired, and they need our portion to do what they do. And we've worked to try and get them relocated somewhere else. So I just want you to know, we're just not here and doing nothing. We are trying to work with them to get them relocated. And I don't think our sliver of property is going to be available at the current location. So we are aware. And it's a gateway into Columbus. You said Second Avenue, but literally, I mean, it's between Second and Veterans. And you have good days and bad days with smell as you travel north or south. And it's not a facility that we want or need, in my opinion, as a gateway to the city and in the center of our city. And so we're concerned, and we're going to continue to work on that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Kyle, anything else?
That's all.
We, the vote passed, did it not? I just want to make sure. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would tell you, on the back of your forms, you can go visit that plan.
Yes. And again, if citizens have questions, they want to share information, they can contact Kyle McGee at Public Works or through 311, and we'll be happy to hear from them. Next, I've got annual sick leave payment. Employees look forward to annual sick leave payments each year, so we're asking approval or your authorization for payment to employees for annual sick leave.
Motion, second to approve number two, annual annual sick leave payment. Any discussion? All right, Bruce, queue it, please. That's approved.
Got a 300...
Grant.
Grant, so that's three and four?
Yeah.
All right.
Five is also a grant.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second to accept grant, or to approve items three, four, and five. Are there any of these that need to be pulled or any discussion? If not, Bruce, you can queue it for all three of those? Or maybe not. Yeah, there we go.
And, Mr. Mayor, the Brownfield Assessment Grant is a $300,000 no match. And 2019, 2020 Crime Victim Assistance Grant is $203,415, $419, with a $5,287, 5% surcharge match. And then, the final one is the 2021 grant application for planning assistance. It's $121,705, with a $13,523 city share, bringing the total grant to $135,228. I've got purchases. You've already approved earlier the false alarm, but this would be the RFP for the false alarm and tracking services. And we're asking your approval with Central Square Technologies. And that is...
There's a motion, second to approve A, in the purchases for our false alarm billing and tracking services. Any discussion? Bruce, please queue it. Counselors, vote. It's approved.
I've got flatbed dump trucks. There's three new and one replacement. The total cost for a full flatbed dump truck, cabin chassis from way forward, $170,000. And then, full flatbed dump truck bodies from transport equipment, $207,668. We're asking your approval.
Motion, second to approve B, in the purchases. Any further discussion? Bruce, would you please queue it? Counselors, you may vote. Approved.
I've got full-size crew-capped replacement vehicle. It's $28,398. Asking your approval.
Motion and second to approve C. Any discussion? Please queue it. Counselors, please vote.
Got dump truck rental.
Motion and a second to approve item D and E. Any of those, anybody like pulled or any questions? All right, you can queue that, Bruce, for those two items. Counselors, register your votes. And, Mr. City Manager, you may want to walk through what those are, but they are approved.
Yeah, D is dump truck rental on an as-needed basis for $25,000. And then, E would be miscellaneous vehicles. It's two mid-sized SUVs from J Automotive, $52,546. These are replacement vehicles. Those are the purchases. And I've got a couple of more updates. We've had the solid waste plan update. I've got the president, CEO of the Columbus Convention and Business Bureau, Mr. Peter Bowden is here. He's going to come and update us. And then, after following him, we'll be... He's going to come and update us, and then after following him will be elections and registration, Nancy Boer. And then we've got City Village, City Meals with Justin Krieg, so President and CEO of Columbus Convention and Visitors Bureau, Mr. Peter Bowden.
Right, good morning.
Good morning.
I tell you, the marketing plan, the strategic plan, the communication strategy that we are working with, the team works with on a daily basis, is either meeting or exceeding our expectations. And this morning, I want to share with you some of those successes that we have experienced so that you, as councilpeople, and the citizens can understand why tourism is economic development. So, we always start off with our presentation by saying that tourism is big business. These are folks that come into the city. We heard earlier from the award that Uptown received, that our center city is the nucleus of that excitement that helps promote Columbus as a destination. So, let's get into the numbers. This report was prepared for us. We contract annually with the Butler Center for Business and Economic Research at Columbus State University to help us determine how we're moving a needle, if we're moving a needle, and how we need to adjust our strategic plan and marketing plan and so forth. 2.3 million visitors came to the city that we tracked into the destination in FY19. They spent over $360 million while they were in the destination. That created over 4,600 jobs for Columbus citizens. $123 million in economic, excuse me, in estimated payroll for those jobs, and $22.8 million in sales and lodging tax revenue. So, you begin to see that these numbers are substantial. And each household, because of travel, because of the visitors that come to Columbus, each household saved over $500 per residence. In other words, if those 2.3 million people were not in the destination, there would be an additional need to collect 500, or find ways to collect another $577 per household in order to continue the services that our citizens and quality of life our citizens expect. So, we want to drill down a little further, and again, Columbus State University does this for us. On a daily visitor, we take that 2.3 million number, and we break that down even further. 6,400-plus people every day in the destination. They spend almost a million dollars every day while they're here. And then we break it down into what they, and how they spend it. So, each individual will spend, each individual visitor that is in the destination will spend almost $160 while they're here. They spend it in restaurants, $171,000-plus dollars at restaurants. Lodging, obviously, in order to have a great experience, they're staying in our hotels. $214,764 is spent in lodging. Retail, everyone who goes on vacation, the first place we always visit is a shopping experience. Over $200,000 is spent every single day by visitors in our destination. Entertainment, buying tickets, going to our performances, $74,861 every single day is spent on some form of entertainment by visitors as they experience our destination. Again, daily expenditure per visitor or by our visitors, sales and lodging revenue, $62,601. Local wages, in other words, this economic engine that's driving the community because of travel, $335,000-plus dollars is devoted to local wages with the jobs that are created every single day in our community. I want to look for a moment at our sales strategy. How is that working for us? Again, we set ourselves up for goals. We hope we exceed those goals. We certainly hope to at least meet those. And I wanted to break this down for you to look at meetings held on this first part of this table. We exceeded our goal, 136% of our goals, meetings held, which generated $23.4 million in our community. Lead sent, this is the thing that we truly have control over at our organization, at the CVB. These are the prospects that we collect RFPs for, for meetings and conventions. We are 93% of goal by the end of FY19. You see there that those, the leads sent to our hotel partners, to our venues, $15.9 million economic impact. This is prospective business that we are courting for the city. And then, of course, turn definite business, 147% of goal was reached, $27.4 million. Now, these meetings don't necessarily take place in the fiscal year. These could happen. We're tracking meetings as far out as 2024 now. So, these, but these are meetings that turn definite, that will occur at some time or some point in the future or in the current year in Columbus. Site visits. We hosted 29 site visits last year, and this has been an exciting number. We converted 72% of those site visits into new business for Columbus, or $1.9 million of economic impact. And then, of course, servicing. Many times when I have talked to council, we talk about servicing seems to be the majority of what we do, which is what sets Columbus apart as a destination, is we're known for our hospitality. I know you hear it a lot as you interface with your constituents and when you experience things on your own, but hospitality is what we excel in. We were, it's 97% of goal, $47.3 million. And when we say servicing, this could be acting as a step-on guide, providing information centers at meetings, any type of request that comes up, if it's within reasons and we have resources, we always like to extend that service to those visitors that are here. And then our communication plan. We undertook a strategy working with Lori Rowe Communications, and I wanted to share these numbers for you, pretty amazing numbers. The, we've had 278 articles published on Columbus, total impressions. These are the number of folks that have either received or passed these stories along. 379 million impressions on these stories. If we were to have bought the equivalent of that ad space that those articles represent, it would have been an investment of $3.8 million just to get that type of coverage. I'm sure everyone heard about the Cool Cat story that Forbes published originally. Well, it has appeared in 89 other magazines across the country, and it's really created quite a buzz, not just locally, but across the state of Georgia. I know that I have personally gotten a lot of phone calls or emails from colleagues asking us what we are doing and why is Columbus making so much noise, and we love it. We're also involved in a strategy to make the best-of list. Everyone wants to be in the top 10, top 50, and so forth. We're also, this strategy includes the accolade type of stories. This would be the distinctive food, dining, best parks for outdoor lovers, best day trips from Atlanta, unique museums around the world, and amazing places to visit. We have had 65 articles that have placed us in those types of categories across the country. So, we're very excited about that, and the team has worked really hard to make that happen. So, let's talk about film for a moment, and we'll wrap it up. Currently, there's an economic impact of budgets working that have either been made in Columbus or working about the wrapping clovers, so $9.3 million total film budgets in our city. That below-the-line spend, $5 million, and this is something that we presented last week to our stakeholders about how we need to capture more of that below-the-line spend by bringing additional vendors into the community. In the pipeline, we have $41.7 million in total budgets of films looking at Columbus. This represents roughly nine to 10 films that we are prospecting. We hope to have pre-production start on one of those before the end of this fiscal year, and then the remainder in first and second quarter of 2020. That below-the-line spend, $16.5 million. So, again, you see that this, the film industry is a significant economic driver for Columbus. And of course, again, we have been held up at the Georgia Chamber Entertainment Coalition meeting this past week as the prime example. There was a recent study that the Chamber conducted, and outside of Atlanta, Columbus has the biggest impact on film to date because of what the city has done with the public-private partnership that has been established. We wanted to close by saying that this sort of strategy is calculated. We watch trends. We do tons of research. We're always talking to our consultants to find out what it is that we need to move the needle, to make sure that we maintain our market share and that our story is being told, and I'm very proud to stand before you today to let you know that FY19 was a great year for us. 2020 is, fiscal 2020 is on the way of likewise being a significant year for us, and we will roll out some additional strategies in the next eight months to support the new infrastructure that is being planned and being built in the Uptown area. So, we'll be back at a later time to show you and share with you some of that momentum that we are doing to capture even a larger portion of the meeting and convention segment.
Thank you, Mr. Bowden, for all you do. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
You and your team has always done an amazing job.
Thank you.
Such impressive. I wanted to ask you, can you go back to the slide where it says site visit 29? Could you explain a little bit to myself and those listening, what do you mean by that? Is that businesses they visit? What are site visits?
Sure. Site visit would be, for example, we have either, we've got a prospect who's interested in Columbus. They've looked at other cities perhaps, or maybe we're the first on their selection list. And so, we invite these clients into the community, and sometimes it can take place over a couple of days where we show them meeting space, or we show them where they might have a military reunion. We show the different venues off. We show their restaurant options. We show the client how their meeting will fit inside the city, regardless, you know, based off of their criteria. And then they go through that selection process. So, this is staff out of their office, out from behind their desk, interfacing one-on-one with clients in order to show the city off as a great place for meetings and conventions.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, well, Peter, thank you.
Great, thank you all.
Your crew is doing a great job.
Thank you.
We appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. Mayor, next I've got Executive Director of Elections and Registration, Mrs. Nancy Boer. And to talk about elections and registration, but I see our finance director standing in the wing, so money must be involved somewhere. So, I'm going to yield and have her come first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, in accordance with ordinance 13-39, our Elections and Registration Director is here to request additional appropriations from council. In accordance with that ordinance, which states that no department or elected office is allowed to go over budget without first requesting additional appropriation and coming before council to do so, and that is why our Elections and Registration Director is here today. She came during the budget review sessions back in May to sort of give council a brief update on the new statewide voting system. And so, she's here just to provide an update on that and also to make her request, so.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning, Ms. Boer.
As promised, during my initial budget review meeting, I did say that I would probably be back for additional funding requests, and so I am here today. Wanted to give you just a brief overview of what our new voting system looks like. What you see here is a ballot marking device that is attached to a commercial off-the-shelf printer. The voter interface will be relatively similar to what the voter is accustomed to. They will touch their selections on the big touchscreen that you see there, but instead of casting their ballot at the end of that, they will print their ballot to the printer that you see attached to the ballot marking device. What we're calling the printer and the ballot marking device is a setup, and there will be a setup for every 250 registered voters in a precinct. So, there will be some precincts with 15, 16, and 17 of these setups at the precinct. Every three setups has to have an uninterrupted power source, because while these are commercial off-the-shelf printers, they don't have a battery backup. So, we have to provide a battery backup, which the state will provide for us. Second part of this is the poll pad, or where you check in as the voter. So, you will bring your authorized form of photo ID. You will bring that ID to the poll worker, who will then bring your record up. It's kind of on an iPad format through Apple, and so it'll bring your ID up. You, the voter, will sign the little poll pad. You will select the ballot that you would like in a primary, whether that's Republican, Democrat, or nonpartisan, and then you'll sign it. The poll worker will issue you the card, and you will take it right back to this ballot marking device to vote. This is what it looks like for the voter, and if you voted in the last 18 years in Muskogee County, this is what you have seen when you have gone to the poll to vote. There are several options on this ballot marking device that will make it easier for the voter. You can enlarge the screen. You can make it regular size. You can change the background. So, it helps you, the voter, if you have some site issues. Here's the big change to that ballot marking device, where it used to say cast ballot in the bottom right-hand corner. It will now say print ballot, and so your ballot will have to be printed next to the, or it'll be on the printer that is next to the ballot marking device. The voter will then take that printed ballot and their voter access card to an optical scan machine. It looks like this. This is an 85-pound bin that will have to go to each of the voting precincts. So, not only are we looking at new equipment, we are looking at new transportation issues, getting the equipment to all of the various precincts, as well as security, once they are at the precincts. The state will be providing this also. Everything I've shown you so far, the state is providing to us. Voting is as easy as one, two, three, and we will be doing some public service announcements to help voters understand the printed part of the new equipment. What we don't have, though, are things to sit that ballot marking device and that printer on once it gets to the voting precinct. So, we've done a lot of research. We've looked at six-foot tables, eight-foot tables. We've met with manufacturing people to try to manufacture something for us that we could transport and set up the equipment on that is transportable, that is repeatable by poll workers, and easy for poll workers to do. Right now, we're looking at a variety of things. If we get six-foot tables, we can fit two setups. If we get eight-foot tables, we can do three setups, which is three ballot marking devices and three printers. Getting the tables to the precincts and then having poll workers set it up may pose some issues for us. We've also found an equipment stand that will retrofit two of the setups, and they back up side to side to each other. We are certainly open for options and are hoping that someone comes up with something really great and inexpensive before we have to really lock down and make that purchase. But these are implementation costs that the counties have to bear, and it's every county in the state of Georgia. Bigger component, too, and it will be an ongoing expense, will be the paper component of this new election system. Preliminary expenses for the paper for the presidential preference primary in March, we are looking at roughly $26,000. This is not a one-time cost, but it will be an ongoing cost. Of course, the first time, you have to stock up, and based on our turnout, we may have some bits of paper left over each precinct so that it's not such a huge expense, except for the first time, but that is $26,000. It is a special security paper, and it's 13 cents a sheet. So, that's why we are looking at the $26,000 for March. So, option one, I just looked at some prices for the six-foot table and the eight-foot table. We also have to look at adjustable tables because we have to meet ADA requirements for people with disabilities. They have to be a certain height, so some of our tables will need to be adjustable to accommodate for wheelchairs and for those with disabilities so that the voting units are the appropriate height for the voter to be able to cast their ballot. Those expenditures vary based on the size of the table and how many adjustable tables we do purchase. That is option one. Option two is buying a stand that we have found that will accommodate the printer, the ballot marking device, and they kind of back up to each other, and it will accommodate two setups on the one, but they are relatively expensive. And then, of course, the third is the paper component part, where we have to buy the paper, the replacement parts for the printer, and all those ongoing expenses. So, in light of that, we are requesting $200,000 to complete the implementation of the new voting equipment.
Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Boer, on the paper request, I know that you don't, at this point, know exactly what's going to be on every ballot, but do you have any idea of how many pieces of paper each voter is going to need in order to cast their ballot?
Typically, it would only be one piece of paper unless the voter changes their mind in the process. The voter is able, because you haven't voted until you actually feed your ballot into the optical scanner. So, let's say, for example, you're in a primary, and you don't want to pick a partisan ballot to begin with, and you say, "Give me the nonpartisan ballot." Voter gets to the voting booth and says, "But hey, I wanted to vote." ballot." Voter gets to the voting booth and says, "But hey, I wanted to vote for sheriff." We have to go back. We have to spoil that ballot, and then, we have to issue another ballot. So, for that voter, just in that one circumstance, that's two pieces of paper. So, to answer your question totally, I do not know how many pages per. But each ballot, each official ballot that will be cast will only be one page.
So, the length of the ballot will not influence the number of pieces of paper you have to have?
No, because we will be able to print front and back on that piece of paper. It may increase the length of the paper, but it will not increase the number of papers that the voter will have to have for their ballot. So, it'll be one, front and back, either eight-and-a-half by 11, eight-and-a-half by 14, and they go up one more size. So, they can, the size of the ballot can go up based on what is on the ballot.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, Ms. Boerin. When I think of voting, I'm walking into the precinct, and I'm seeing a variety of places that I go to cast my ballot. Will that be the same setup when we go, or will there be fewer places to go cast your ballot?
So, there probably will be more places for you to actually go and cast your ballot. For the voter, the process will be very similar. So, you'll go in with your photo ID. You will go to one of the, what we call now, poll pads instead of the express poll. You'll hand that to the poll worker. They will look you up on the system. They will have you sign the voter certificate electronically, we're hoping, so that we don't have to have voter certificates. And then, you will be issued the voter access card that you will then take to the ballot marking device and print. You have the option, once you print, so you can review on the ballot marking device. I can go back to that. You could review on the ballot marking device your ballot as many times as you want to. You can change it as often as you want to. But once that ballot is printed, then to spoil that ballot, you're going to have to spoil it, and you're going to have to go back through the process to have another ballot created. So, we hope to have signage and instructions and all of that available to the voter so that it's relatively clear. After you've printed the ballot, you have an opportunity to review your ballot. And you can review it and make sure that it has the candidates for whom you would like to vote. And if it's good with you at that point, then you would take your ballot to the optical scan. Based on the size of the precinct, there will be one, two, or three optical scanners at the precinct. And a lot of people are worried about that. But when we had the optical scan voting equipment from '96 to 2001, we only had one of these setups for every precinct. So, the line may be at the optical scanner, but it's one of those things that we'll have to identify as we go along.
And the whole system, excuse me, the whole system is set up so that it's not, it's not able to be hacked. This scanner is not attached to the Internet or anything like that?
There's never any Internet connectivity to anything that is used at the polling site, nor is there Internet connectivity to anything that we do here at the tabulation center on election night.
Okay. Mayor, I would like to offer a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a...
Just a quick question. I know that most of us have a problem with change. Will there be opportunities for citizens to train or have workshops that they're able to go to to see how this new equipment operates?
We have committed to the community, to educate the community on the new voting system. We've already had five community education training spots. We did a public meeting already. Those public meetings will continue the commitment to train at churches and at organizations. We had the AKAs here last week. We go to Nazareth Baptist Church on Saturday. So, we're asking people if they would like for a group to be able to see the equipment, actually touch it and feel it, that we will do it, just as we did when we implemented to the touchscreen voting system in 2002.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ms. Mayor, I know that you've already voted, and it's obviously something we've got to do. But I'm going to have the Finance Director to tell you where the money is coming from.
So, that, the $200,000 represents about .39 reserve days. And at this point in time, the funding source would be reserves. If, however, I'm optimistic, right? If FY20 turns out to be very similar to FY19, hopefully, we'll have other departmental savings that'll cover this $200,000 expense.
Well, and to be clear, now, the vote, as I understood it, was to expend up to $200,000 to be able to accommodate these needs. Now, if it's possible to find tables and some of these things that are at a lower price, we will not expend that full $200,000. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And $150 million was appropriated for this new voting system. The state only spent $107 million. So, we are hoping, election officials are hoping, that there will be an opportunity to apply for grants to help us with the implementation. And if so, we will continue to do that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I've got a final update, and I am going to call on Deputy City Manager Hodge to introduce our guest, who's going to come and talk to us today.
So, good morning, Mayor and Council. This is really just an update on City Village, which has really transformed itself into the Mill District. For those who weren't on council at the time, the previous mayor participated in a case study back in 2012 related to what we called City Village. She established a steering committee at that time, appointed by the mayor. The co-chairs were Phil Tomlinson and Marquette McKnight. It included over 125 individuals, many organizations, businesses, and agencies along the Second Avenue corridor where City Village is located. There was an introduction process into what's called Purpose Built Communities, which will be discussed with the Mill District update. A consultant was hired back in 2014 to develop a master plan for this particular area of the community. There were multiple group and individual stakeholders, meetings, roundtable discussions, community meetings over the next year or so after 2014. In 2016, those results and that master plan was presented to council. And then, the Mill District really has picked up from that point and taken it just another step. So, at this time, I'll have Justin Krieg come forward. He's the President and Director of the Mill District. And just to give you an update on all the progress that they've made, and really where we came from, from back in 2012.
And, Mr. Mayor, before he comes, I asked that staff invite Mr. Justin Krieg to come and talk to us and share with us the City Village, City Mills update that they provided at The Good, Bad, and Ugly. And I asked for the update because, of course, I was here when we kicked off the City Village effort. I was here when we kicked off the Liberty District effort in 2003 with the master plan, in 2003, master plan. The City Village master plan came about in 2014, though they got started in 2012. And I've said before, in this seat, that I would like to see something done in the Liberty District in my lifetime. And I continue to doubt that that might occur. We've tried different things, and there's been opposition at every turn. And I do believe it's time to do something with the Liberty District. I believe that the City Village model is a good model to follow, and that's why I had the Deputy City Manager to outline where it started in 2012, and how it got started, and who appointed the committee, and who the vice, the co-chairs were. And the master plan came forward, was adopted by this group in 2014. The City Village project came long after the Liberty District master plan. And I wanted to share the model of the City Village, share the progress that has been made, and then, hopefully, a decision can be made about how we proceed forward and how we can be successful with the Liberty District, if something good is going to happen in the Liberty District in my lifetime. And so, that was the purpose or point of sharing the master plan of City Village. Director Rick Jones came and gave an update on the Liberty District at the last meeting, and he had the list of those appointed and the lack of participation or attendance at meetings. And he's looking for direction as to where to go from here. And I think he deserves to be given direction. And so, hopefully, after hearing from Justin Krieg, we can think about how we want to proceed with the Liberty District, that we can gain some successes. So, with that, we've got Justin Krieg here.
Mr. Gray, looking forward to hearing you.
Thank you. And I'll do my best to kind of scoot through this, and thank you, Pam, for that quick history. So, our mission with the Mill District, and just to give you a little bit of evolution and transition from City Village to the Mill District. City Village is one defined neighborhood, basically between the Total Systems Campus downtown and the Johnston Mill Loft Project. And the Mill District has expanded that project area to include four total neighborhoods. So, the area that you see highlighted there in yellow on the map is what has historically been known as the City Village Neighborhood. Second Avenue essentially runs north to south through the middle of those, these four quadrants. At the very top left is Bibb City, which most people are familiar with. And then, on the top right is Anderson Village, which is around the Godwin Creek Golf Course, all the way up to Manchester Expressway. And then, in the southeastern quadrant in blue is what we call the North Highland Neighborhood, which has been its historic name for years and years. And so, you may ask, where did the Mill District come from? Well, the stakeholders from the City Village plan hung in there and tried to figure out, how do we implement this plan? And so, we basically came to the realization that we could build some nice new shiny things in and along the river, just north of the Tesis Campus. But if we were ignoring everything that was around it, we weren't really doing the most good for the surrounding community. Because the areas east of Second Avenue are areas that I'm sure you all are familiar with, areas of disinvestment, poverty, et cetera. And so, we felt the urge and need, kind of as community stakeholders, to take a harder look at this work that we were trying to implement. So, you see the current Mill District Board on the right-hand side there. We've got a lot of good stakeholders, residents in the neighborhood, organizational leaders that are doing existing work in the neighborhood. And then, just to give you an idea of where we are staffing-wise, I work full-time for Historic Columbus. The previous mayor asked Historic Columbus to help administer the City Village master plan. Historic Columbus has wanted to stay engaged in the process just because it fits within our mission of work at Historic Columbus. And so, the Mill District now contracts for two days' worth of my time to dedicate towards the Mill District effort. It's our hope and my hope that at the beginning of next year, sometime in kind of early spring, that the Mill District will be able to hire and sustain its own Executive Director. So, as was previously mentioned, we have partnered up with an Atlanta-based organization called Purpose Built Communities. They're the organization that has been charged with helping to revitalize the East Lake Neighborhood in Atlanta. That was the most, one of the most crime-ridden neighborhoods in the entire city of Atlanta in the early 2000s. And so, a very concerted, thoughtful effort was undertaken, was undertaken to try to find ways to turn that around. And so, out of that effort came an organization called Purpose Built Communities. And what they found was they developed a model. When you make strategic investments in early childhood education, community wellness, and mixed-income housing, when you do a targeted strategic approach to investments in those three areas, you're able to move a community forward. Columbus is a very philanthropic, very charitable, very hospitable community. And we put millions upon millions of dollars to feeding people, educating people, and finding ways to affordably house people. One thing that we may not do the best job of is being very targeted in that work. And so, what we have found in our exposure to Purpose Built is that when you do that, when you target those investments in a strategic way, you are able to make some significant gains when it comes to a community. And so, you'll see the organization of kind of how things are set up. The community quarterback, that's a general term that Purpose Built gives an organization like the Mill District. It's the community advocacy group that helps to find, define strategies for those three areas. And you do that in a defined neighborhood or a defined geography. And those, that includes the four neighborhoods that we're working within, roughly 750 acres. These are numbers that I'm sure you all are familiar with. These are numbers that the Chamber of Commerce is familiar with. We're, you know, Columbus-wide, Muskogee County-wide, we're looking at almost 22% of our population that's in poverty. Our median household income is behind the national average. Then, when you begin to drill down further into those numbers specific to the Mill District four neighborhoods, it becomes an even more dire scenario. And on average, we've got about half the population in the Mill District that is at or below the poverty line. And $20,000 is the rough average household income. So, significantly below our county and significantly below our nation. And so, what has been interesting through this process is to, especially over the last three or four years, is to see our corporate community, our Chamber of Commerce community, really being kind of at the forefront of finding ways to combat intergenerational poverty, poverty within our community. And so, this is hopefully going to be a model of how to implement some of those strategies. And it may carry over to other areas of town like the Liberty District, like the City Manager mentioned. So, when it comes to mixed-income housing, we have a developed, defined strategy for how to implement some of this work. NeighborWorks Columbus is one of our primary partners. They currently have a income-restricted senior living facility under development now. It's right next to Fox Elementary called Highland Terrace. It's in the location of the old Meredith Mills site. It'll develop about 100 or so senior housing units. They've also been doing some strategic demolition and acquisition in and along Fourth Avenue, one of the most challenged streets in the entire area. The three images you see there at the bottom, that's the Cozy Corner, if you're familiar with that property, located at 35th Street and Fourth Avenue. But we're already beginning to see some positive movement in terms of crime and things like that in and along Fourth Avenue in that particular area. Another critical partner in terms of providing affordable housing is, of course, the local housing authority. Chase Homes is located within the Mill District area. We should be seeing, the housing authority should receive the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Award from DCA to bring that housing down and then rebuild on that existing site on the northern portion to move it away as best as possible from the railroad tracks and the electrical substations. The interesting thing about the redevelopment of Chase Homes will be that it will include, like at Columbus Commons in the Liberty District, it will include a mixed-income component. And so, some of the experts at Purpose Built and some of, some other like projects in the country have found that there is a need and a great benefit to providing mixed-income housing and not concentrating poverty in one particular development or one particular area. So, the new Chase Homes, whatever it ends up being called, will have a mixed-income component, which will mean that there will be market-rate apartments, affordable apartments, and then, deep-subsidy apartments available to the community. Education is a big portion of this work, and is frankly something that is not my particular background or strong suit. So, I've relied on many of people on our board and community members to assist with some of this work. But one of the big things that Purpose Built Communities pushes... But one of the big things that Purpose Built Communities pushes is to develop a cradle-to-college pipeline, and, and that can come in many forms. Um, and it is, for Columbus so far, it has come in the form of a, an MOU with the school district particularly, particularly directed at Fox Elementary School. And so we have an education governance committee that works directly with Fox, um, directly with the principal there, Dr. Yvette Scarborough, to help fill the gap when, when gaps are discovered. And, and so to date, the Mill District has, uh, fundraised and is going to provide three hundred thousand dollars a year for five years going forward to fund four critical positions at Fox Elementary. Uh, Dr. Scarborough right now does not have an assistant principal. She does not have a dedicated social worker, a, a parent involvement specialist, or a K-through-two instructional coach. And those are the things that, that she tells us and that Purpose Built backs up, those are critical needs at that school. And so those are needs that the Mill District has been able to fulfill, uh, for this year and, and will be for five years going forward. We're also working with a, a neighborhood kind of community-based, um, faith-based, private school called True Spring Academy. Many of you may be familiar with the work that Rob and Carrie Strickland do at this school. Um, they do a great job taking some of the, um, some of the most difficult cases at Fox and providing them a, a smaller classroom size and, and more one-on-one time. And so to date, they've got a, a K-through-four, um, they've got K-through-four classes, roughly sixty kids total, and they expand a grade every year. Um, we're working with them and having discussions with them about developing an early learning center. One of the things that we have found in this work that is critical to families, mothers who have children and, and their ability to, to work and provide, um, for, uh, consistent and stable income is to be able to provide, um, an early learning or day, daycare option for their children who are zero to five. And that not only provides them a great safe place, um, that provides them educational attainment for their children, but it also provides them the ability to go to work and, and feel good about their, their children's, um, day throughout the, throughout the week and, and months when they have, when they have work. So we're working with, with those organizations to develop further education programs in the neighborhood. And then finally, community wellness, this is a, a pretty critical component of the work as well. We've really, um, been fortunate in the sense that we've got great organizations and partners already doing, really just knocking it out of the park when it comes to this type of work in the area. Mercy Mode of Columbus, um, is helping lead the way to provide, uh, affordable healthcare right smack in the middle of the project area. Open Door Community House provides, um, a SurfSafe certification program to, that will ultimately lead to, uh, kind of career training, job training opportunities for people in, in the area. And we're exploring some other opportunities, um, such as medically tailored meals and, uh, and things like that. The city's also been a, a large player in terms of providing connections that are critical to people that, that don't have a car. I mean, the, the two connections of the Riverwalk just last year, uh, that completion allows people either on a bike or on foot to be able to travel downtown or to other places of employment a little bit easier and a little bit more safely. That all feeds into the, the benefit of the, of the community as a whole. And so our, our hope here is to help address the needs of the existing community, um, through these three particular areas, but also to attract some new investment. Um, studies show us that, you know, providing a, or what's critical to developing a sustainable, um, growing community is to provide for a mix of incomes, and so a mix of housing in the area. So we'll try to find ways to attract new investment and, and new families to this area. Uh, I think we'll be successful in doing that. Um, and we're already seeing some, uh, some investment in and along Second Avenue as well as in Bibb City already. So we're excited about the work. We think it can carry over. We think it's a good, a good model. Purpose Built is a nationally acclaimed organization. Um, there are other, there are twenty-six, twenty-seven other network members, which Columbus is now one of as of last, last month, and that affords us a lot of legitimization when it comes to applying for grants and things of that sort. Um, and we think it's a, it's, it's a great model, um, and, and we'll see how it goes. It, it is long-term work. Hopefully, city manager, we will see it in your lifetime, um, on Second Avenue as well as the Liberty District, but we feel like this is a great place to start.
Outstanding. And you are feeling pretty good, right? I mean, you don't have to hurry.
I am right now.
Uh, it, any, uh, any questions for Mr. Krieg? It's an amazing, amazing program you've got going.
Well, eh...
Yeah, we've got Counselor, uh, Woodson.
Mr. Gray, thank you very much for that presentation. I too was there from the beginning. I took the walk when we first looked at, uh, Bibb City, so I'm aware of where it's been and where it's come. Matter of fact, during that conversation Isaiah and I had, and I said, I bet this project will take off first, and it did. Um, my question to you is, as we're using this as an example, will then the board or some of the organizations like the Historic District, um, the school system, um, in looking at the Liberty District, um, what's the visibility of them partnering too? Because the difference between the two is, um, the people that it involves, the neighborhood, and there's been a lot of, you know, power struggles.
Right.
So if we're going to get the Liberty to that area, then we need people like the people that are at the mill to play a role or to give guidance or to say, this is what we need, this is what you need to connect. Or, um, I think you said All Purpose, is it called, or something?
Purpose Building.
Yeah. Um, that organization, you know, for those interested in helping the Liberty District to get educated on it, to see. Um, because I too, like Isaiah, in my lifetime, because I don't plan on going nowhere, Columbus is my home, in my lifetime, I would love to see the Liberty District. And my only interest in it is not because it's in my district, but of the rich history that it has. And we, and one of our slogans was, we preserve our community in the past, and now we're seeing amazing things are happening. Look at Uptown, when we were doing Uptown, a lot of people didn't, didn't think Uptown would turn out to where it was going to be. A lot of people were, um, not very supportive. When we had hockey, they say hockey in, in Columbus, you know, why, why? So I know it could happen, it's just a matter of timing and the key people being involved. And I just feel that if organizations like yourself are successful and were able to get it, uh, I feel that they can share that knowledge or assistance to get the air, the area up. I know that's your main focus now, but I, I hope you consider it, because I might be seventy, eighty years old, and I'm still going to be Liberty District, Liberty District, until we get something there.
Well, go ahead. I know she asked you the question, but I, I was just going to say, uh, yeah, you were there early on and we met at Comer.
Yeah.
Um, and we had people from all over Columbus in the room. In fact, I'm going to ask the deputy city manager to put on the screen the list of people. Um, and, but this document says, the City Village Riverfront Vision and Master Plan is a result of a comprehensive two-year planning process, two years. The, this final document represents the culmination of intense resident and community outreach, engagement, and thinking about the future of the Col, of this Columbus's in-town neighborhood known as City Village and, and of Columbus as a whole. But there, there are two pages, and so people were invited to come to the table. And, and as we went to more and more meetings, you know, you didn't have, all of these people were not in the room, you know, some fell off, and they're, they're two pages. Some fell off and some kept coming. And at the end of the day, uh, you were, ended up with thirty, thirty-five people there, but they were people who, um, were committed and willing to work, not saying they weren't committed, but you had enough to go around, but you had participated in organizations. You can see architects and, you know, uh, just, you see the list. And, um, but, um, but this list was, um, I don't know who created the list. I know, uh, former mayor and staff and Justin, I don't know who, how this list came about, but everybody was invited to the table. And, um, and then, at the end of the day, as you transition to, um, City Meals, I want you to go to that second slide and show who's on the list, uh, Justin, of, you know, who you're working with now. Uh, and so I, I say all that to say, Counselor Woodson, that once you establish the core committee, then that working committee is going to solicit Historic Columbus and all these other organizations to come to the table and buy in, just like you bought in in City Village. We want the same kind of work out of you. And so I think, you know, if you can get it organized and get it going, we could end up with a, a Liberty District fund that hires Justin from Historic District for two more days, and then he can work at Historic District one day.
He's looking at you like, really?
Uh, but, but I'm looking at the list. Uh, I, you know, I don't know how you came to this final list, but I see, you have Marquette McKnight, Leah Blackston, Ken Henson, Rodney Close, Lynn Williams, Lisa Walters, Brad Turner, Kara Strickland, Kathy Williams, Bill Holbrook, um, Kim Jenkins, ex-officio, and Yvette Scarborough. I don't know what happened to all the, of the other people, but you ended up with a board. And, and you, you're continuing to make progress and move forward, and you've, uh, through this process, worked with Purpose Built, and you've gotten engagement from all over the, you can do the same thing in the Liberty District. We can do the same thing in the Liberty District, and that's what I'm crying out for.
Well, I think we're crying out for the same thing.
Yes.
Nothing different, we're just having a more difficult time than we should.
Right. Well, and...
But maybe twenty twenty will be the year.
Maybe, and, and let me offer this to the council. I think Historic Columbus has the interest in the Liberty District. Um, I don't know that we've got the, the staff power to commit, kind of what we have committed there right now, as we've got committed currently to, to the Mill District, but we would like to participate in the process. And, and maybe it's, you know, maybe some help will come and somewhat of a, a, an unbiased third party, you know, some, you know, that doesn't, we don't have a particular agenda. We don't, we're not interested in pushing a particular plan necessarily. Um, but we will happy to, be happy to come alongside y'all and see if we can begin to move something forward in the Liberty District.
I would like to see something like that happen in twenty twenty. Um, it's just around the corner, you know, sit and say, okay, we need to revamp this and get it going. Because like Isaiah, I too, I would like to see before my time. I want to go out there and eat and socialize and, and have a bit.
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to prolong it. I'm, uh, I don't have any more questions or anything else. I don't know if there are any other questions, but I, I just wanted to say that here's a model, and they started much later than the Liberty District, and we see the progress that they've made, and we see the lack of progress in the Liberty.
I think the model that, um, has been developed and is currently functioning quite well, uh, is, is, it can be broader than just the Liberty. I think that as we look at the areas and pockets of poverty and, and, uh, substandard housing and, and, and limited access to medical and, and education facilities, I think it's a, it's a template that we could use to try to go in there and, and, and revitalize communities throughout this, this city. Um, I, I really applaud what you guys have done. Uh, and I think it's interesting, too, that it's, uh, you know, if, if you try to get romanticized about the thing, but you, you know, the, the town started on the river because of the power of the water, you know, fueling the mills, and it spread north and it spread southeast. And we see that happening again, the energy from the river that has created all this excitement in the Uptown area and the vitality that we're seeing in this community, and it's spreading north up the Second Avenue corner, and it will be spreading to the southeast into the Liberty. So, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that concludes, uh, the city manager's agenda.
Counselor Davis.
Mr. City Manager, normally, um, I wouldn't do this, and you, you know I'm a baseball player. You know baseball players are superstitious, and I'm, I'm superstitious. So, you know, there's an old saying in the game, it's a, it's an unwritten rule, it's a golden rule, that you never pack the bats before the bottom of the ninth, you know, you just don't, wait until the game's over. But I gotta, I gotta say this, uh, and I'm doing it for you guys, because, uh, I want to thank you, you've been very instrumental in doing a number of things around town, but I think at the last council meeting you mentioned the, uh, you talked about all the, uh, road improvements throughout our city, and one of them happened to be the, the River Road Roundabout that everybody has heard about. But let me just tell you, it opened yesterday, and, and I just wanted to share something with the staff, because I know that, that you guys, sometimes y'all get the brunt of it, but at the same time, it wouldn't be possible without the coordination, the efforts, the hard work, the piecing together, Mr. City Manager, of the funding and all those things to make it happen. And, uh, you know, and these are some of the things that's been said this morning. It was great, I rode through it without an issue, money well spent, uh, fast as I've ever gone through that intersection at five o'clock. Wow, I went through it this morning, seven-thirty. You know, I went through it three, four times faster than I've ever been through that intersection. I drove through in a peak, traffic hours, very smooth, no congestion. Big thank you to engineers, contractors, workmen, all those who made it possible in a short amount of time. Yes, it's working well, wasn't backed up, you know, smooth as silk, it's great, thank you. Uh, I mean, you kind of get, it's functional, no traffic standing, bravo, kudos to the city, um, smooth traffic, I mean, it just keeps a great improvement for the intersection. And I think you get the, the picture. That's all I've received this morning, it's just one after another. And, you know, people talk about these things, a lot of money, it costs a lot of money. Well, let me just ask a question. How much money does you think it costs to do road improvements these days? Really? I mean, with the economy just rocking, state of Georgia has the highest GDP in the whole country, hard, it's a contractor's world out there. They, I mean, sometimes they're on the bottom of the list, but they're at the top right there. It's expensive to get things done these days. Material costs are the highest they've been, so, and it, it's not just this project, it's all projects. It's going to cost money to get them done, but, um, let me just tell you, that contractor that's been out there has been exceptional, uh, just unbelievable and done a great job. And I talked to him yesterday, he came over there and cornered me and had a great conversation with him, and they've just been outstanding, and I've even heard nothing but good things. But, you know, and it's going to take people some time to get used to, and I, I did that because still, it's a new traffic pattern, and you got to get used to it. And some people have never driven in these things before, you know, some have and some have traveled around to other places and driven through them, and it's going to take a little while to get used to them, but once you get used to it and it becomes the norm, I mean, it, uh, you know, I think it's going to be a good thing. So, um, you know, I still know they've got a lot of work to do, they're still working on it, there may be some hiccups here and there, but, uh, it's been impressive to, to watch these guys do what they've done. So I, I wanted to share that with you and the staff since you're here, so, um, you know, maybe, maybe you'll feel a little better. And we're ready.
Decorated porta potty?
Well, yeah, everybody's been enjoying the holiday festivities with the porta potty, that's been, that's been incredible. And then I found out it wasn't really the contractor, actually, it's some of the neighbors that have been walking by and going down there and just doing it for everybody, so kind of brightening your day up a little bit. But that's kind of been a great focal point of the, of the roundabout, is the, of the decorated, uh, holiday tradition porta potty that's up. You can go by right now, Thanksgiving, it's decorated Thanksgiving. They just finished Halloween, now it's Thanksgiving.
Well, and I, I appreciate you, uh, bringing that up, and, uh, we should have mentioned it, but an awesome project, uh, I think, uh, great end result, and we're getting, uh, that kind of feedback as well. But I wanted the deputy city manager to just reiterate the cost and, um, and, and you're right, there's more work to be done, but it's, uh, uh, it, it turned out, it's beautiful and it's functional, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's processing the traffic, and I think at the end of the day, um, people are really, really going to be happy. I remember when we did the one at Blackman Road, uh, we, Counselor Allen, you know, the, the pushback, the feedback we got, and then when it was done, I mean, everybody thought it was just great. And so I, I think that's what we, we're going to have with, with this particular one.
And, and to highlight that, the, you know, people come and go, people move and transition, you got new people coming in the community, and a lot of this stuff's new, but if you know the history, I mean, you know this. When I first came on this council, my phone rang off the hook about getting something done there, that intersection. How many times I call you, what can we do? What can we do? How many public meetings did we have about what could we do? There were no options. DOT wouldn't work with us, there were no options. So it's set on the long-range traffic plan, we got it moved up to the short-range traffic plan, some funding was set aside, but it's been there for a long time until this option came available, and the DOT accepted it. They wouldn't forelane it, they wouldn't do anything... anything else. The only thing they were going to do was really more of the same at a cost, and that wouldn't be acceptable because people would really get upset about the waste of money because you really didn't change anything. But when this option became available in three, four years ago, and they said, you know, we think it'll work, they turned it over to their engineers, and they did say it would work, and here we are today.
Yes. Deputy City Manager, Pam Hodge.
Sure. So, this is a locally funded project. It was a $5.4 million budget, made up of multiple funding sources. O-Lost Infrastructure, 1.3 million. The paving fund, 700,000. L-Meg, we utilized state funding for this project as well for 1.5 million. Stormwater, 400,000 for the culvert work, and also prior year SPOLOST of 1.5 million. You mentioned the contractor, that was Southeastern Site Development. That was approved by council for construction in July of 2018. The project should be completed the first quarter of next year. The traffic circle roundabout itself is completed, so traffic is flowing through the roundabout, but there's a lot of ancillary work to be done, the landscaping. But this will also make it much safer for pedestrian crossings, and there'll be a lot more signage in this location. It slows traffic down in this area, so it should be a major improvement along River Road and Bradley Park.
And, you know, and another thing I want to add to what she just talked about, a lot of that stuff is not in control of the city. The engineers control a lot of that because they really dictate what you can and can't do, and then they come back and tell you, you got to do this, X, 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 to make it work. And then they slowed it down, and then they came back and said, you got to do some more. It was a constant work and progress. And then the school matter got involved with Brookstone and turning lanes, and like you said, there was really, they had to put a bridge in. They had to put a bridge in, and underwater or stormwater, and transmission line movements. It was, you know, when you think about the cost and add it all up, that was a big, it's a big project.
And as we talk about this project, I, Council, I'd like to reiterate to those watching by television that we have, you just mentioned road projects, we've got road projects going on all over the city, and to the tune of more than 300 billion. Where are they happening, and how much are we spending?
Out of the 327 million, 220 million of that is in the South Columbus region. So, we have multiple projects going on with the spider web project, the interchange at Casita Road and 185, the Diverting Diamond that's happening on Winnabista Road and 185, the roundabout that's realigning Brendan Road and Fort Benin Road, there'll be a roundabout there. So, just projects, like the city manager said, going on all over town. A vast majority of them are in South Columbus, and those are much-needed projects.
But midtown, north, south?
Midtown, north. We've had projects on North Veterans Parkway. We've had the Whittlesey Project, which was several years ago. We've got a Williams Road, Fortson Road roundabout that will be coming forward soon.
Talboton Road.
Wenton Road, Streetscapes, Talboton Road.
Fort Benin, I just, I mean, it's all over. So, I just, when people hear us talking about the River Road Roundabout, $5.4 million, I don't want them to get confused to think that that's where you, I mean, we're spending and doing work all over the city.
No, and that's a good point, Mr. City Manager. These are really, all this stuff is restricted funds. I mean, the stuff we're talking about, this is not the general fund or the operating budget, whatever. This is money that is reserved and earmarked for transportation improvements, and it comes from several different pots. I mean, it's all, when you piece, the city, it's routine to piece it all together, whether it's T-Spots or the infrastructure from the O-Lost. I mean, a lot of that money comes from there. I mean, this is stuff that the citizens asked for, and they're getting it in the tune of what you just said, over 300 million of road improvements throughout the, throughout the city, and they're going to continue. But that's how it's done.
Yes.
Whether it's from the federal government, the state government, or local, that's how it's done here. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. We'll move on to the Clerk's agenda.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the Clerk's agenda, item one is a resolution excusing Counselor Garrett from today's meeting.
Motion second to approve. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's approved.
Item number two is a resolution appointing Mr. Trey Carmack to the Board of Tax Assessors.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Items three and four are email correspondences from Ms. Maddie Hall. She's the chairperson of Circle. She's requesting to declare the seats of Ms. Shanae Goodwin Whittlesley as well as Tassiana Savage-Ganova as vacant.
Is there a motion and a second to accept those correspondences from Ms. Hall? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They're approved.
Item number five is a request to select Counselor Woodson to replace former Mayor Pro Tem Evelyn Turner-Pew on the council subcommittee.
Motion second to approve, Counselor Woodson. Any dis-
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I assume that is the council subcommittee-
On the clerk.
On the clerk's office.
It is.
That is correct.
It doesn't say that.
Okay. We'll make that correction so that it's recorded properly. But it is, it is a motion second to allow Ms. Woodson to replace former Mayor Pro Tem on the council subcommittee on the clerk of council's office. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Item number six.
Motion to minisbe receives. There's a second. There is a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have board appointments. Mr. Mayor, we have for the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners, the seat of Paul Pierce, as well as the Housing Authority. We were able to get in contact with Tiffany Stacy, and she is interested in serving another term of office.
Okay. I will, I'm not going to submit her today. I'm going to, I'm going to wait till the first, or the next meeting.
Okay. And as well as the pension fund, we will bring that back once we have made contact with Mr. Charles Staples.
Okay.
We have a council appointment that's possibly ready for a vote. We have the Airport Commission. We have the seat of Carl A. Rhodes Jr. The Airport Commission is submitting the names of Mr. Carl A. Rhodes Jr., Clint Thomas, and Vincent E. Woodward Jr. Does a member of council want to make any nominations to this board?
Counselor Thomas.
I would like to request that this item be held in abeyance until at least our next meeting, if not more than that. We just got these names yesterday.
All right, motion.
And I would request that we hold off on that. And then, Madam Clerk, you said if the, if any councillor wants to nominate. I thought our, that the governance document said that the Airport Commission nominates and the council.
Counselor Thomas, that is correct. And what I meant by nomination, if any member wanted to select one of the three that is being presented.
Make a nomination, or a recommendation.
And make a recommendation. Maybe I used the incorrect terminology.
Okay. So, you're not saying that a councillor could nominate someone to serve on that, on that commission?
No, I'm not.
All right. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, right.
But I would request that we hold it over at least until the next business meetings to give us a chance to do some investigation.
Okay. So, there's a motion to delay till the next business meeting, and there's, is a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, it'll be carried over until the next council meeting. Counselor Crabbe, was that what you?
I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
Could you please go through the process? I know that the Airport Commission is a little bit different than some of the other committees. And so, can you please go through the process of nomination, just for clarification, please?
Sure, Counselor Crabbe. For the Airport Commission, which is different from most of the other boards, the Airport Commission actually submits to the council three nominees. From the three nominees, the council will make the selection of who would serve on that board.
So, if anybody has somebody in mind that they would like to be considered, they would give it to the commission?
Right. That is correct.
That is the only way that it can be considered?
That is correct.
Okay.
Because the Airport Commission actually submits the nominees to council.
To council.
And the council would select from the three that submitted from the commission.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, for the Hospital Authority of Columbus, we have the seat of Susan McKnight. For this authority, the council submits three nominees to the Hospital Authority of Columbus for them to make a selection. Are there any nominations or nominees that the council would like to submit today? For the Medical Center Hospital Authority, for the seat of Michael Burns, Counselor Thomas is renominating Michael Burns, and also making the nomination of Mary Solomon and Tracy Sears for this seat.
Is this going to be a vote?
Yes, we can, the council can move to have these nominees forwarded to the Medical Center Hospital Authority.
We need to do it individually?
We could do them individually, or we can wait to, or we can wait to, I complete the, we have one more. Okay. We also have the seat of Rebecca Rumor. Counselor Thomas is nominating Max Brabson Jr., Mary Solomon, and Tracy Sears for this seat. And if the council would like, we can submit these nominees to the Medical Center Hospital Authority. If the council wants to make that motion.
Motion second to submit the nominees for Mr. Burns and Ms. Rumor's seat. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It'll be submitted.
And next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. We have the Personnel Review Board. We still have open for nominations, the seat of Charles Little Jr. and a vacant alternate member seat. For the Recreation Advisory Board, we have the District Six appointment. For the regions, I'm sorry. Thank you, Counselor Allen. For the Region Six Regional Advisory Council, we have the seat of Edward Barnwell. It's open for nominations. For the Tree Board, we have the seats of William Consoletti, Brad Huff, and Candace Wayman. All are open for nomination. And finally, we have for upcoming board appointments, we have the Board of Historic and Architectural Review. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Counselor Woodson?
Madam Clerk, on the Tree Board, those that are eligible to succeed, okay, they're not interested to serve. Okay.
That is correct.
I answer my own question. Thank you.
You're welcome, Counselor Woodson.
All right. We will need an executive session in a few moments, but is there anybody that was unable to complete their statement during the public agenda that wants to come up for another three minutes? Bruce, turn that mic on that. All right, state your name again and your address.
I have the hand mic.
You've got a mic right there, right to your right. It's-
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, I am Audrey Holston-Palmore, and as I previously stated, I am still awestruck by the letter of the risk manager sent to me on March 7, 2019. My daughter continues to say to me, in her expression of disbelief of the content of the letter, and that she wants an opportunity to refute the inaccuracy penned by the risk manager named Anne Marie Amiel. This is the letter. "The book of Holston-Palmore, 'A Right to Justice,' conceived during this issue, wants to silence the pathetic voice of injustice representing the Columbus Consolidated Government because the justice of truth manifestation has arrived and will not go away. The celebration of Kwanzaa, which has the principle of unity, God-spirit unity, thought to be referred to in the U.S. Pledge, not the ungodly decorations of denial, belittling, and confusion, spoke of inverbalizations by the Columbus Consolidated Government representative concerning this issue. On today, I am expecting a motion be raised by this governing body and a second offered to affirm a vote by the body to allow a meeting be held with us, meaning the inclusion of myself and my daughter, in the person-to-person meeting with the risk manager sooner than later. Perhaps this council as a body can reflect on integrity and unity as moving forward as we will continue to do during the Kwanzaa period. Please vote to allow the meeting with the risk manager to occur. My next appearance on the public agenda about this concern will be January 14, 2020. Again, thank you for your attention. At this time, I would like to have you all do the motion, and it be seconded by this body so that we can move forward perhaps before January 14, 2020. Continue to have a good day."
Thank you.
My name is David Pate. I live at 4915 St. Francis Avenue in Columbus, Georgia. Thank you for hearing me again. I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm not asking you all to make any changes in the length of these RVs. You know, I'm, you know, that's, I'm not asking you, you know, that's not even, to be brought up for discussion right now. The only thing I'm asking you to do is just to adopt a certain way, a definite way, to measure an RV. The way it is right now is up in the air, and anybody can be so questionable if you go out to measure their RV about, why are you measuring it here? Why don't you just measure this and so forth? And I can understand that. But if you change this thing with that simple situation, it will eliminate that problem. You won't ever have a problem again. Mr. Allen brought it a while ago, different campers have different living spaces. Well, that, you know, that's really not the way it is, folks, because a motor home, you measure it from here to here. That's all living space. The only other kind of camper you got is a fifth wheel, and it's all from here to here. You know, there's no tongue on it. So, there's no question about how it's measured. And this other RV that I showed you a picture of is the only one in question, and it's got the hitch up front. And that's the only, that's the only camper that will be in question. There'll never be another question about how are you going to measure an RV if you, if you make that change in that ordinance. And if y'all think about it, I guess y'all, y'all may know it, may not, but if you go out and buy a trailer from anywhere, whether it's a utility trailer, or whether it's a closed-end trailer that thousands of people use around Columbus every day, they are measured by the working surface of that camper. If you go out there and buy a trailer, if you buy an eight-by-12 trailer, it's eight-by-12. They don't, they don't measure the tongue up front as part of that camper. I mean, you know, in the same way with a closed-end trailer. If you buy an eight-by-12, it's eight-by-12. They measure the box. If you go to a campground, a lot of campgrounds will not accept a camper over certain length of feet. If they, if they only accept 36 feet campers, if you go to their campground, if they're in doubt about your camper, they go out there and measure it. They measure the box, you know, 36 feet long. If it's, if it's 37 feet long, you can't, you can't stay there. So, I mean- if you go buy a new camper, y'all, if you go to the side of the, every camper that's sitting on all, thousands of them all over the United States, on the side, it's got, it's got a number on it. That number is a measurement of that camper from the front to the back. That's all. I ain't asking y'all to do anything else. Just adopt something to measure the box and the living space. Thank y'all.
Mr. Page, we appreciate it. And I hope, I hope you understand that I think we've had at least two or three counselors that are, that believe as you do, that it should be more clearly defined. I think the challenge we have is that there are other toe behind structures that would also be covered in this particular ordinance. And I think that's where some of the confusion. So, they've asked Mr. Hudson to go back, and as he puts it, to see if the juice is worth the squeeze, to try to change it and clarify, so that they are able to identify just, just the camping type facilities. Counselor Davis?
Mr. Page, I'm not sure if anybody asked you this question, but I, I am curious. I know I used an example of your neighbors. I did say your neighbors might be concerned. I, that was, that was in general, okay? That was just an example. I don't know. But I would like to ask you, do you live in the neighborhood, or you live in a rural area, or?
No, sir. I live on Ford, I, I live in town.
In town, okay. You have neighbors on both sides of you?
Yes, sir.
And just out of curiosity, you're probably on good terms with your neighbors. Have they, do they have any problems, anything like that, or any concerns?
Mr. Davis, that, that RV has been in my camp, in my yard for twenty years beside my house. Not that one, but other ones. I've never had a camper under thirty-six feet long.
Okay.
They've been in my driveway for over twenty years. The reason, what happened, I pulled that camper, which is thirty-eight feet long, in front of my house, because I wanted to do some concrete work in my backyard, in my driveway. While it was out there, about a week, somebody came by, you know, and called the city. So, the city came out, comes out there and measures it, and tells me then that, hey, you can't have a camper over thirty-two feet long. I, I didn't know it. I guess I should have.
Did you do some concrete work in order to get the camper back in the backyard?
No, sir, that wasn't, I mean, I already had concrete in my driveway. The camper was, you know, the camper was, had been in my driveway for twenty years. I mean, that's where I've always kept it, because it, it wasn't in my front yard. The only reason it was in my front yard for that one week is because I was doing some work in my backyard, and I needed, you know, access to my backyard.
Without any hardship, is it, would it be possible to get your camper in the, towards the back, or?
No, sir, I could, I could easily. I mean, I, I sold my camper for, I lost so much money on, on this RV that I had, I had to get rid of, because it was thirty-six feet long. I loved it. My wife and I loved it. We, we got rid of it, because we, I mean, we had thirty-five thousand dollars in that camper and sold it for twenty.
Right, right.
But if we can't keep it at home, I don't want, I want to keep my stuff at home so I can take care of it. I mean, the camper, as far as keeping it in my backyard, if, if when I came down here last time, if y'all had a, chose to change the ordinance to what we talked about last time, to where you could have a camper longer than thirty-two feet, as long as it was not in your front yard, as long as it was in your backyard or back in your driveway, you know? And that's the way it's been at my home for all these years. But, but I understand y'all's situation, and I know you can't make everybody happy. But if you change this thing to just measure the box or the living space, you will never have a problem again. I guarantee you, it will eliminate a, a probably, probably fifty percent of this man's right here's problems when he goes out to measure a camper. Because there won't be no, because most people probably, when he goes out there to measure these things, they say, Wayne, why are you measuring this? Why don't you just measure the box? Because everything else that you buy is measured that way.
Well, I thank you for spending your time today. And, you know, like I said, there's always two sides to the story, you know that. But I, like I said, I am open-minded on it. So, appreciate you coming today and voicing your concerns.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Page. All right, we do have a request to go into executive session. I believe it's on land procurement.
Property acquisition, disposal, personnel, and potential litigation.
Motion second to go into executive session. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're going to need to clear the, all right, we are back in regular session. We have, while in executive session, we discussed procurement, disposition of land, personnel issue, and potential litigation. No votes were taken. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.